Welcome. I'd like to call to order the Lemanster planning board for May 7th, 28th. We have a 630 hearing. Continued open public meeting for Willard Street for preliminary subdivision approval.
I'm still on track.
Folks, for the record, Chris Anderson with Hanigan Engineering here on behalf of Crown Eagle LLC for a preliminary subdivision up Willard Street. We were before you several weeks ago for another preliminary plan that there was some feedback from the various board members regarding, and we've taken a second look at some of the concerns that were raised and provided a revised preliminary subdivision plan, if you will. Just as a repression for everybody, we have Willard Street along the audio of the plan, with the subdivision being along the northerly side of that. We have Lake Samoset up even further off focus to the north, with Crabtree Lane along the southern limits of Willard Street. Couple of the concerns that were raised during the previous meeting were potential access to Relishour Drive. We did do additional research into the property. There's actually a one-foot strip of land that runs along the limit of this property, so it's not a viable access point for the road for a second means. And further into that, there was some concerns regarding the general flow and configuration, dead ends and whatnot regarding the internal configuration subdivision. In doing so, we did review potential alternatives, and we did talk to a few of the abutters. The abutter located at 671 Willard Street, which is just to the west of the main parcel, has agreed to work with us to relocate and readjust the property lines and to allow for an alteration of the roadway layout. For the purposes of conversation, most of the subdivision has remained the same, still three roadways, roadway A being along the easterly side of the project, roadway B being along the westerly, and with an interior roadway, roadway C, which will have two dead end cul-de-sacs on either end. As part of the revisions that we've made, we were able to realign the roadway for roadway B to allow for a sharper turn before it hits the utilities when that runs through the property. By doing so, we were able to increase the distance from center to center from roadway A to roadway B from the original 160 to approximately a little more than 370 feet. So we've helped separate those distances to bring more of a loop subdivision, if you will. In doing so, we actually decreased the length of dead end roadways. For example, the easterly dead end used to be around 250 feet, now it's at 150. And the westerly side was around 499 feet, we're now at 290 feet. So we reduced the length of the dead end roads to help minimize some of the concerns regarding access and other features in the property. Most of the utilities remain the same with the intent to connect to existing public utilities within Willard Street. Like on the previous plan, there was concern regarding the general configuration of the subdivision with its compliance or with the intent of subdivision regulations, primarily with double entrances of the site. So we've also proposed an alternate layout, which will include just one single entrance into the property. Again, for the purposes of discussion, roadway A and B and C all remain the general same. The only alteration with this is that roadway B will actually connect perpendicular to the roadway A, therefore only creating one means of access into the property. This length is going to be approximately 200 feet, a little bit more than 200 feet, but it helps and minimizes the confusion and fizziness of the entrances in the site. That's the intent behind this alternate subdivision. By doing this, we would request an additional waiver for the two means of access into the property. That's the general gist of the plan. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, do we get a copy of that one?
No.
No, the offhand?
The offhand? Now that all done, why not? Can you just see a little bit of it? Yeah, if you put it up. Finish to the top. Now does that decrease your cuts?
Yeah. It stays about the same. There's actually more fill in this area than cut.
Well, I mean, you fill that, yeah. And what's the width here in the front? Is it still the same? Are you at 32 feet?
For which portion, sorry.
Well, if you're going to make this one entrance.
Under the original submission, we would be requesting a waiver down to the 28 foot. But we can increase the width through here to allow for.
Yeah, because if you're going to bring the two into one, you can make that wider in there.
Yeah.
Okay? And that way they give you. And has conservation looked at this?
They were to be filing the notice of intent in current with the dependent subdivision plan. But they were part of the review for the original department.
And if we change this, does this change the number of lots? Or you still had the same?
Under this configuration, we have 30 lots, but the alternate plan is alternate, and the by right plan have the equivalent number of lots.
The same, okay.
Phil Hanigan, Hanigan Engineering here, just wanted to step in for a second. One of the things that we wanted to talk about was, it doesn't, we would, we prefer neither option. Either one would be fine. Okay, what we're trying to say is that by, this configuration here conforms to the regulations. There are no waivers required except for the width of the going from 34 down to 28, which is a typical waiver request within the regulations from the board of past. What we looked at, though, was the fact that there are a lot of driveway cuts, a lot of existing roadways up and down the road, and as an alternative, if the board so chooses, we could do this instead. So it's not that we're asking for this only.
Uh huh. No, 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 I realize that.
We'll do this plan.
Okay.
We did look at other access points, ability to get in and out of the land. As Chris pointed out, this area up here, this house there, this is where the road actually is, so you'd have to go in through wetlands to get there. You can't get there from there. This is a strip of land owned by the city in between, so we can't go through there, and that's actually open space.
Isn't Lake Shore apartment, that's by Lake Samoset, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so that's private.
Correct, correct. And there's a one-foot strip of land in between. So what the applicant did was approach the landowner of this house here, and that's where the new configuration comes in, would be to bring that through part of their property. That was the way we were able to make it work. Okay? So by doing that, it's more of a loop subdivision, it's one contiguous area around, it's way in, way out, and we prefer, our preference to which one the board uses is up to the board, okay, relative to the plan. We want to provide an alternate just for the fact that it, I think, quite frankly, I think it looks better. Very simple. It's one access, we would need a waiver because if you're more than 12, you need a waiver, you need two means of egress. So that's the reasoning behind doing that alternate layout, was because of the fact that, we have to show that we can do it.
Right, right.
But from a planning perspective, does it make more sense to do it this way than this way? That's up to the board.
Okay. Okay, do you have anything else there? Okay, I'll open it up to the audience. Yes, sir?
I have one question. On that proposal.
Excuse me, sir? Please identify yourself.
Yeah, my name is Frank Andrews. I live at 677 Willard Street.
Okay.
Right here.
Your house, great.
Okay.
Okay, so the other house to the right of that, is that the Seals?
This right here?
Yeah.
No, that's owned by Solis?
Solis.
Yeah.
Is that going to stay there?
Under this configuration, no. Actually, I think in both of them, I think that you're planning on replacing the house anyways, right? Yeah, so you're going to, either way, the house comes down. Okay?
Okay. I wanted to know how close, either way, how close would the road be to my property?
Let me let Chris see that, he's got better eyes than I do.
Different each plan.
See, under this plan, the roadway would be.
Probably 80 feet.
Yeah, probably around 80 feet. Along the roadway, you'd be looking at a little bit more than 128, so about 130 feet along the roadway.
But this one, a lot further along.
Yeah, way further away.
Yeah, on this one, you're.
Oh, that one there. Way down in the original plan, and then the cutting back.
So that's, okay.
So we would just look for your guidance on which way you would like us to pursue for the definitive phase of property, that's all, for part of the corner.
Do I have any other questions or comments? How about the board?
The looking person, either way, is a loop. Even the one with one way, it's still a loop. It still comes in, goes out, and you know, comes in one roadway, wipe it two. Like at this roadway, all the way over here, where you can just pull it back. Does that, this one change at all with the other one?
Nope.
No. Everything's the same as before, you're just bringing it, returning.
How are you counting the footage to the cul-de-sacs?
From the center line of the intersections to the center of the cul-de-sac.
Should be counted before these are roadway.
Yeah, you wouldn't count it beginning the roadway because this is a loop road. This is a dead end, this is a dead end. This is not a dead end.
The other way.
Yeah.
This way, this way, the dead end would be, would not be, this would still not be a dead end because of the fact that this is less than 500 feet. Okay? So if this, if this line up here was up in here, and this was 600 feet, 700 feet long, then that would be considered a dead end with.
Would you replace, would replace a lot here to here?
Correct. So this would be the dead end, and this would be the dead end on the configuration, on this one.
Yeah, you get the loops.
Right. Now, if the board, if the board looks at this as being a dead end, a big dead end, and wants to do this, that's fine too. But we just think from a planning perspective, this is better. And we could take, what someone mentioned before, we could take this section of roadway and widen it out.
Yeah.
What was the original plan you showed us last month?
Yeah, this one.
Is this the original plan?
The two center lines remain essentially the same, but we're allowed.
Can you lift that a little bit first?
Yeah, if you put that up.
Well, no, it's high, so everyone can see it anyway. Hey, get the big one.
No, that was Kristen thinking.
So that's showing it at 160?
Yep.
Two roadways?
The center line to center line would be 160 feet on this configuration.
Between the two points here, so by taking the road and bringing it out. You're widening, you're widening up to open it.
But at the front, the access to Willard Street remains the same on that configuration? It just widens later up on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Willard Street stays the same?
Willard Street stays the same, the entrance weighs the two.
125.
It's 125, the same.
Correct.
It just widens once you get into the property.
Correct.
This entrance hasn't changed at all, right?
Correct.
Same spot.
You have the same number of lots?
With this configuration, we increased it to 30 lots, instead of 24.
With that configuration?
Yes.
And that was 24?
24. Right, because we also, we also gained.
What was this?
That's 30 as well.
That's 32.
30 also.
30 also.
Right. So this, this has more land, okay? The other thing it does, when we turn the road, we're able to get more usable frontage as the road comes through this way on both sides of it versus being only one lot and there were two roads. Okay?
There's only one lot between those two?
I think it's three.
Under this configuration, there's three ones.
So we have a lot with a road on both sides?
Right, in the old configuration.
Old type of configuration, right.
So there's definitely been some improvements made. The applicant worked hard with the neighbor to work it out, to get it, so that we could improve the plan we think that we have, so we're likely to move forward to definitive stage at this point.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, do I have any more? Any motion of another?
So there's, there's no other egress we can come up with, anywhere else that makes sense? There's nothing else? Have you looked at anything else?
There's really nothing to look at, because this is own, this is conservation land. This is, there's a one-foot strip between the two property lines here, and you really can't get over there without getting into wetlands. This is conservation land, a strip in between here, so that we're able to get some additional land to work over here to make everything work. And part of, I think, part of, part of the perception of the old plan, because two road were riding side by side, it feels like it's one access, even though it's two. So by being allowed to open it up and create more of a loose configuration, it takes away that feeling of the, of the two roads being too close together at the other end. Okay, but the access point is the access point. We couldn't go further to the east or west with the access point because we have, we have existing Crabtree Lane here as well. So there's, there's a, you know, you're trying to fit everything in there.
Okay.
That's good.
Want to close it?
Close to the corner?
Close you made in second if you close the hearing? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Continued public hearing for city council petition, 33-18. Dean J. Mazzarella changes zoning of eight lots of land from residence B zoning, district commercial zone district, located along the north side of Mechanic Street, and the south side of unimproved portion of Glendale Street, and also the unimproved Milton Street and adjacent portion of Glendale Street. All is shown on a plan entitled Plan to Accompany Petition for Zoning Change. Lemanster Mass, prepared for Dean J. Mazzarella, dated January 10th, 2018 by Whitman and Bingham Associates LLC. Do I have a proponent here to speak on this favor?
Well, what do you think's going to happen? Actually, they, but that was President Stephanie. Yeah, we can just move you over.
No, no, no.
I'll go with you.
Yeah, Anthony, put it up top like the other one. You want, you need your course, yeah.
This right here, you run camera the whole time.
My name is Anthony Cleese, I'm with Whitman and Bingham Associates, here on behalf of the applicant, Dean Mazzarella. Unfortunately, as I look at it tonight, I couldn't be here. If you can get out of the one, I'm trying to get here as soon as I can, but.
Excuses, excuses.
But these are school to me.
Yeah.
He acts like he's the mayor or something.
I'm sure he'd rather be there.
So, I know this is our, our second time around here. I can go through everything again, talk about when I just passed out, some updates.
Any changes, updates you may have?
Sure, sure, so some updates. Okay, to re-familiarize everybody, we're talking about the proposed rezoning of some land that's currently zone residence B to commercial on Mechanic Street, Mechanic Street here, Commercial Drive here, Upper Mechanic Street, signalized intersection, waste structure in the plant, Mollie Field, I see credit union to give us some orientation there. This dash blue line is the area that we're looking to try to rezonate to commercial. This is a plan very, very similar to what you saw at the last hearing, but it is updated, and that's one of the 17s I passed out, is the updated version of this. As was brought up in notice, I had some erasal missions on my plan. The boundary line never changed, this was always consistent, but I hadn't updated some of the abutters on the plan. Specifically, Dean Mazzarella, a year ago or nine months or so purchased these properties here, before I had the previous property owner on it, so I've updated to include that this is not part of the rezon, these are existing commercial lots here. Another abutter, I updated here, down on Mechanic Street, 429 Mechanic Street, updated that abutter as well. I had an errant arrowhead that pointed incorrectly to the Seals Lemanster parcel, which led to some confusion unfortunately on which properties were being rezoned, but this thick black dash line consistent, that was the properties that were rezoning. It is seven parcels, I know there was, again, confusion on my part, where one of my petitions to the council didn't say eight. That was due to previous assessors had two lots, they've since combined them for one, and it kind of occurred this last time. And then also, what we've since updated through some of the discussion with the city council, to make it a little more clear, a little table on the land areas proposed for rezoning. We originally had just a one total there, and you know, in doing so, we noticed there was math error in that, so listed all the parcels and the square footages, including the layout portions, as there's half of Glendale, and you know, over half of Mechanic Street that's included in that. So total sum at the bottom, and then each parcel, to have an idea. But again, the layout hasn't changed since last time, it's still been going down the center of Glendale, down the property line, on the northwesternmost property line of the Mazzarella property, Sun Line Mechanic, tying back into the existing zone line that cuts through portions of the property. Again, so we have some portions right in here that are existing commercial, so that's, that's the area of rezon. We had submitted previously a conceptual plan, trying to give people an idea of how the site might be developed, and we're, we're not at, you know, definitive site plan stage, but trying to help give an idea of what could occur. And so this was the plan you had seen last time. I didn't redo another one, so it still says gagney properties up here, but I wanted to see, this was the plan we had showed last time. Again, through some of the discussion with the city council, one of the questions that had come up was in regards to Milton Street, you know, and the disposition of Milton Street as a paper street, you know, rights and then that. And we'd have to go through a process to abandon, discontinue that, to get full control of that, which we haven't done that yet. Hopefully to get through some of these processes before we continue through the project. So that question's coming up. What we did is looked at other alternatives, just to give an idea of what else we could do to work around Milton Street. So here was one option, for example, leaving Milton Street, we wouldn't have any parking in it. So this would be, you know, an area that there'd be no obstructions in this, in this section with cars or on this plan. You still couldn't get to Glendale because it's 30-foot difference in height.
Yeah.
But you know, if it became, you know, a hurdle, you know, we had a retaining wall on this conceptual, again, all conceptual plans to try and give an idea of potential, potential layouts. Well, this was just one, you know, to try and show how we might work around Milton Street. And then, same thing, other often, you know, similar, different building footprint, and kind of, you know, pulling this a little further away from the neighbor. Again, working around Milton Street, just as, just to kind of give an idea of if we had to work around Milton Street, you know, we could still, could still do that. We're not at site plan approval process, but trying to give, you know, people an idea of some of the potential that we could do.
So that doesn't affect the size of the building?
No. Yeah, I mean, it's like this one, we had about 13,000. This one, same size of the building, we just don't have as much of a, of a buffer strip, you know, to the writing properties.
Okay.
This version, got a little more buffer strip back, went to a two-story building, you know, to get back some of the similar square footage to pull that. So like with any project, you can change different criteria.
Right.
You know, I think with this, the size of the project, we're bounded by parking in the building, so there's that balance. Can't have too much buildings, you're not going to have enough parking.
But, okay, yeah, we're not getting it, I agree.
Exactly, exactly, so it's well away from that.
We're looking at zoning at this point.
Exactly, yeah, so we're well away from that, but just trying to give an idea so you can kind of visualize what the potential for the property could be. And anything we do could be less than this, could be less.
What's it zoned now?
Zoned as residence B.
Residence B. In residence B, for apartments, how many apartments would be allowed in there?
So it's, so a couple ways you could, you could develop it residentially. You could do ANR, which we had kind of done, you know, a real approximate kind of layout. You could do one, two, three, four, five, two family lots, you know, for that. So we could get 10 units essentially, a stash, where the only approval would be an ANR plan. No site plan approval, no ZBA or anything, it would just be a by right ANR plan, and we could put five, five, two family homes up there. With the zoning for residence B for multifamily, it's, I want to say it's 8,500 square feet land area you need per unit, so. So the area that we have here, it's about seven units to do a single standalone by right multifamily. Then there's provisions, I believe, to go to a special permit. Where the way I interpreted the zoning, it didn't give a clear density, it just said a maximum of sixty units. Realistically, I don't, I think it'd be tough to fit sixty units in here. You know, it's, maybe you could get to twenty-four, thirty, maybe start looking at underground parking garages. Again, the bounds becomes.
You thought about forty D to forty B?
If, well, it didn't, it said we go maximum of sixty units in the zone with a special permit. Didn't give a maximum density. It was kind of confusing. But, or forty B would be another option if, if we were restricted by the zoning to do something to get more units out of it, for sure, yeah. There are also other, other uses that are allowed in the residence B. Daycare center, adult daycare, government buildings, church, bed and breakfast, funeral home. And then you have some that you can do with special permit. Assisted living, medical office, medical facility, boarding, lodging, townhouses, wireless communication, commercial greenhouse. So some of the other, you know, by right, but with special permits, again.
Okay.
We could do a site walk in between the last meeting, which members here could discuss that.
Okay, do you have anything else you wish to?
No, Anthony, questions? I think I don't want to take up too much of your time. And we've kind of done this once before. We'd be happy to answer any questions on the line now.
Well, I'll open it up to the audience. So I have any questions out of the audience? Yes, sir?
Yes, I have some maps I'd like to put on, point out.
Please identify yourself.
Peter Latchis, twenty-two Demasa Drive.
Okay.
And just a question here, did, did you give this to the city clerk, these new plans?
Not yet.
Oh, so you just, okay, because we have no information on it. Could I see one of those maps? First time I'm hearing about it.
Yeah, if you want to go.
It's not a secret, is it?
No, nothing is secret here. Yeah. These are only propos, these are only.
Oh, just this here?
They're only sketches, so. The, the, what we're concerned with is the, only the property line. And the potential use might have something to do with it, but. We don't know what that is.
So this was the plan that we had last time. Trying to, this is from the city's GIs system, kind of give you an idea of the zoning of the surrounding area. So the red is residence B, red, orange, red, make a little color. Residence B area here, again, the dash blue line is the property we're proposing to have rezoned. The purple is the commercial. And then green industrial, yellowish-orange mixed use one. So we're coming off the existing commercial. Again, part of our, our property, if you see, is, is commercial. We have the IC Credit Union here at the corner of Commercial Road, Drive and Mechanic Street. And looking to extend that. This portion of the property is currently zoned, commercial here, a little bit here. So it's going to give you an idea of the, of the whole area. So again, so coming from the Mall Whitney Field, treatment play on your last, IC credit union right.
I'm gonna call it north. Is it north?
North is this way.
Okay, it's actually north.
Yeah.
North of the proposed area that you have, there's, those are the ball fields?
Correct, yeah, the little league fields, yeah. Separated by Glendale Street and the rest of the property.
The, do we know how far down the overlay district comes?
Yeah.
Does it come down to twelve?
It doesn't come, no. I don't even know if it falls onto that map. It stops up.
It's way up.
It's way up, okay.
Yeah, considerably up.
With the Mechanic Street overlay?
Yeah.
I don't want to say which street.
But it's around here.
It's up in that area. I didn't know how far down it came.
It is, it's quite a ways west.
I think at one point, if I remember correctly.
At one point, it was already down to twelve.
It was to come all the way down to Commercial Drive.
Right.
I thought at one point, and I think it was some of the recommendations, to bring it all the way down in that this area where it's already commercial would be a, you know, good fit for that. But from what I recall back, it was.
It got changed.
Four or five years ago.
What was that?
You had an audience member want to show us a map. Can we see that?
Yeah. Okay, hold on a second. Mr. Latchis, you got something that you want to show us?
Yes. That other map, you have the square footage of this guy. Which, you said you had another one.
Yeah, the one I was gonna give you.
Yeah.
Which square footage are you looking for? Of the rezon?
Okay, what do you get for it?
It's gotta be the clip man.
Yeah, why don't you take that one down?
There was a lot of problems with this from the beginning. His petition states eight lots, and there's only seven listed in the petition. So therefore, you know, that's where all the trouble started. So once we, once we looked into it, we saw that the building inspector approved eight lots instead of seven. Because this map was showing him that they were trying to zone city property. The next thing, the assessor's office claims that they were zoning eight lots. And he named City of Lemester as one of the lots. And then named the other eight, seven. Now, the planning director, she was looking to give me the abutters list. So I went down, I was concerned. I said, would you please read the petition? So she read the petition. I said, how many lots in, in the petition? She said, seven. So I said, would you show me the eighth lot? So she pointed to this. I said, okay, fine. So I said, what are you gonna do? You can only list seven. So she got back to me the next day, and she said, forget about that lot. Over here, they claim that this was two lots. So what happened was, they got caught. And he deviated, and he said, well, this was once two lots in nineteen twenty-four. And I, he played ignorance to the law and said, hey, I don't know anything in front of the council. I don't know what happened. This was two lots. That's the eighth lot. So he identified this as the eighth lot. He thought he was clever, but he was boxing himself in. Because the truth of the matter is, originally, on this map here, it's eighty-eight thousand square, eight, eight, eighty-eight thousand two hundred and sixteen square feet. Now, he just said, he's pretty close to my figures. I think he said he has seventy-five thousand?
Seventy-five, it was.
Seventy-five, eight seventy-three, okay. So what they did was, they're trying to come clean on something they tried to pull. I agree with that figure. I have to match mine. But I also did a survey, and I got my figures here. So what happened was, he has to, he's admitting that he was trying to zone something else other than this. Because that's a twelve thousand, there's twelve thousand square feet missing on this eighty-eight thousand square feet. So it only proves that they were trying to rezonate. Then, then he lied about this, and he said that was once two lots. But he signed the petition, and there's seven lots here. There's not, no way he can get around. This is illegal. Now he's coming clean. He said, whoa, wait a minute, I got seven lots. This wasn't included, and this is wrong. What happened was, he got caught in this whole thing. Now, my map here. See how close I am? I guess I did pretty good. So I came up with seventy-five, three forty-six. And they came up with what?
Seventy-five, eight thirty-seven?
Okay. Roughly. So I have to look at everything I did. But these are.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, okay. These are all from the old assessor's map. This is what I got from the registry deeds, and this is twelve, five forty-one. The old regist, the, the old map had a different figure of twelve, four eighty-one. So I don't know which figure is correct, but I went with this one because this is very precise. What I did was, these are lots of a hundred, so it's a hundred by a hundred, ten thousand. Forty by a hundred, four thousand. Sixty by a hundred, six thousand. This one here is a ten thousand lot, minus the eight, eighty-four, brings it to nine, one one six. This one here is a plus because ninety percent of it out, so this is a three sixty-five. This is ten, a hundred by a hundred, but as you notice, well, it should go from this side. This is an engineered map. Here, as you notice, this was once a hundred feet. And now it's eleven feet, a seven, thirty-five feet from here to make Mechanic Street. So just a shot, eighty-nine point four one. And we came up with a figure over here, as you notice, it's curving down, ninety-six. So we came up with five five six two instead of six thousand. This one here is ninety-eight, ninety-six. So it's four thousand, came up with three, eight eighty. And this road was, we had the assessor check this too. We asked him to do three readings here, here, and here. We came, we came up with the same, twenty-five feet here, thirty-eight feet here, thirty-two feet here. And this is easy, this is twenty feet by a hundred. So we're pretty close. I'll have to analyze what he did. But what I'm saying is, to just come walking in here and telling this board that, oh, by the way, instead eighty-eight thousand, seventy-five thousand, so. Obviously, and his, his was, here's what really bothers me. They, they said this was a mistake. But yet, they come short of three, what, twelve, uh, twelve thousand square feet, I guess? So they're short. This was no mistake. This was trying to rezonate. And then to change down here, there's another lie. So you got lies, 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 and now.
It would have been another, just saying lies, lies, lies. There might be mistakes there. You've got to prove intent on a lie.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
Seventy-five thousand.
Okay, I, I, I figured enough.
Right.
You're right, okay, there, there was some, there was possibly a mistake. We know old drawings are not accurate.
I think it would.
We deal, we deal with all the time. Not saying you're right or he's right. I'm not saying that.
No, no, I.
The important part that I have is I want to know exactly what the boundaries are and where the boundaries lie for the zoning change. Okay, and that's, that's my important thing is, is for this board to know is that the boundaries that are shown on here, okay? And that, and the continuous space within it, is that, is that accurate, okay? And that's what we're looking for, so that we can reference off of any one of these other streets or these other homes, so that this is in fact in the middle of Glendale. That this line over here, in fact, butts that other property. So those, that's where I want to, that's where I'm interested in.
Okay, I see what you're saying. This is the nineteen oh-nine, and this is what they did up here. This is Glendale, this is Mechanic Street. There were parcels of twenty by a hundred, okay? So it all figures out here. It matches out with the old zoning now. So it's pretty, pretty easy to figure out. So I'm sure, there's no way you can change these facts. They're all by a hundred. Except the corner is here, just a little different.
Yeah, when you hit the corner, exactly.
That probably all, that probably all went all the way to where the bank is now, and that was all reading.
Well, this goes to here, this corner. Because for some reason, they added thirty feet more here and thirty feet more here. They come off a lot wider. Because if you see, this is sixty, so you have one, two, three, and this is one, two, three, four, five. So that's a hundred and ten, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty-four. Okay, so they add some over there. But, so some of that lot up above is already in the commercial district because it sits now.
Exactly.
The problem I have with this.
Those two, and then part of the city's.
Exactly, exactly.
But you don't rezonate those?
No, no, that's not part of this petition. No, because those are already commercial. But when you come out and say, in the beginning, you have eighty-eight thousand square feet, this was a mistake. He said, this is a mistake. Then if it was a mistake, you would have had seventy-five thousand square feet. That's what I'm trying to say.
So what are you requesting? That they amend the petition to the seventy-five thousand square feet?
Well, the seventy-five thousand, I guess, I guess he has to go before the council to amend this?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're just, we're just a recommendation.
This is the first time I'm hearing this fact.
This is only a recommendation from us.
Exactly, exactly.
But.
All I want to point out is, he had serious problems from this in the beginning.
Okay, now, what are your issues? I'll take that, that there were, there were some mistakes made. And yes, there were some old drawings, and we've all seen the old drawings. And we want this to be accurate, okay, using new techniques. At the same time, we can, the petition, to give the right number, whatever it might be, it can be defined, okay, and the petition can be amended.
Right.
If they're correct.
I guess.
Yes, it can be.
Right.
It's only a piece of paper.
This whole thing started off bad.
Well, okay, that's right.
Really bad.
So now, now we're trying to get it squared away. That's all I'm trying to do.
It was really bad.
Yes, it was.
They did a mistake.
That, that was showing up here. I was there the last time you were.
Well, I'll tell you what, how do you explain this?
Okay, I, I don't want to go any, I don't want to go any more deeper into that. Mr. Cleese has his, his option to speak.
Okay, can I say something quick enough to?
Go ahead.
The abutters are very much opposed to this. Enough abutters signed this, so they need seven votes by the council. So I hope you, you, you take this very serious because they should be kind of tilt and scales their way. And you've also got to think of the thousands of people that commute there every day. This is going to be a very nuisance because it's just near the connector, I one ninety. Coming, Mechanic Street all coming in, and then stopping out here and having cars coming in and out.
There's enough breaks there though. There's a light there. There's breaks everywhere.
You don't live there.
I, yes, I do. I have a business, I have three businesses within a quarter of a mile from here. I'm there. Fifty times a day by then.
These people live there.
I know, but I'm, I know. I've sat, I've sat here and watched the traffic, and I could have got out at any time. You know, two days ago I did.
Well, the main thing, the abutters, both the abutters have spoken, and they, they've got seven votes by the council. They have a right.
Well, that, that's not a point where arguing.
Oh, you don't, you don't, that's.
What are you arguing?
No, 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 no. No, I, I don't have an issue with this.
At this point, would you know what's southern?
Huh? Yes, I do.
Seven lots?
No, what the deal is, is they have enough petitions of the abutters on this. they have enough petitions of the abuders on this property that on the city council, normally, it would be a 63 vote. But because they have the number of abuders protesting, it makes it to a supermajority, which is a 7 to 2 vote.
Yep.
Okay?
And not knowing, being an engineer, I think we came pretty close. I'd like to see his figures and see what they are.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, I'm saying, my big argument is how they started. They started really, really bad.
Mr. Cleese.
I'll take that out of the house.
Yeah?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Listening.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I could come back to the board, please.
You sure can. You want that one or you want the other one?
Either one of them. It serves the same purpose. You left one behind. This one here.
It's
It's coming out. Oh, you got them here too, okay.
So I apologize for having to get into these specifics, Big Man. We discussed that the last hearing, discussed with the city council. I did make mistakes on this point, Big Man. As Mr. Ratchus has pointed out and showing his plan, I had an arrow go up to this part. As you saw in his plan, that dark line right around here, denoting land proposed to be zoned commercial. That never changed. The intent never was to have the city limits as part of the reasonable. I did not change the abuders. We've worked on this plan for years and I know it was before, but I feel like it's worth pointing out again. Yes, I made a mistake with the math on the calculations. I disagree that the math matched the city limits parcel. Yes, the difference of 12,300 square feet from the previous plan. I'm not exactly sure with how I came with that count, but to put in perspective, the city limits parcel is 10,800 square feet. So that doesn't match that difference. Portion of the property is already zoned commercial. So it would actually be less than that, that would be rezoned, which would be 7,600, which doesn't match the difference, so. I do take exception to the accusations that we tried to pull a fast one. And it's multiple times I've heard this in public meetings. And each time, I feel as though I have to defend myself. I made the mistakes. The applicant didn't direct me, hired me to do a job. Yes, he signed the application, but hired me to do that on his behalf and put the information in there. On the petition, as explained, as was the truth, not trying to lie or pull a fast one. Originally, I had put down a process. Because the previous assessor's information I had had a line right here. This was parcel 70 and parcel 3. And then it emerged, so then it became seven parcels. The assessor made me aware of that. So I quickly changed the petition before I submitted it. I took out the reference to parcel 3. And neglected to change the first sentence of the petition from an 8 to a 7. And unfortunately, yes, all of these mistakes come together, definitely to confusion. And I understand that. But there was no malicious intent in that. Was not trying to lie. I just, I made some mistakes. I apologize for that. And we have to keep discussing that, but I just feel as though I want to make that point again.
In any regard to the boundary change?
Has never changed. This line has never changed.
So whether I had seven or 17 lots?
Exactly.
Doesn't matter.
Absolutely correct.
Doesn't matter.
So that was, that was all I wanted to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else which to speak? Yes, sir.
Tom Knack, 315 Dawson Street in Leominster. John, would be appropriate to talk about traffic?
Yeah, it's open for anything, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Now, I attended the first planning board meeting. Spoke a little bit. You know, Governor Cleese identified that the two Gavney properties were in fact, I'm Mr. Mazzarella, but, you know, identified on the map. Spoke a little bit at the city council. And I referenced the actual Cumberland Farms traffic study from 2015, which I received through the Monetary Regional Planning Commission. I'll make it brief. I'd just like to give you some numbers that I shared with the city council and actually amend them a little bit, which I don't need city council permission to do. The Cumberland Farms traffic report is actually a seven-year projection. So this is what traffic is projected to be like in 2022. So just four more years. Peak weekday hours from 4 to 6 p.m., they are projecting 29,000 cars a day on Mechanic Street through the intersection and onto the Leominster Connector. On Saturday hours, peak times from 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock, they are projecting 26,000 cars a day down Mechanic Street through the connector. Now, what I neglected to tell the city council, but I'd like to tell you is that these numbers of 29,000 and 22,000 are called non-build numbers. Meaning that's what the traffic study projects the traffic would be had the Cumberland Farms not been built. So I think we can all agree, those numbers might be slightly higher. But regarding all the meetings that I attended
Tom, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
When they built the Cumberland Farms, I know we went through the traffic report. They give a grade to the intersection at that point in time even with the peak?
Yes, actually
Or the projected peak?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that. There are six levels of service. Level A is the best, minimum wait times, and then level F is the least. One of the particular levels assigned, I believe it was during the weekday, so 29,000 cars a day, was level E. And on the weekends, which would have the 26,000 traffic report, so it would be a level, excuse me, weekday was level D. And then weekend was going to be level E. Now, level E is identified in the traffic study as having a minimum wait time of 55 seconds, but a maximum wait time of no more than 80 seconds. And that's right at that intersection. So you're talking during the day, 29,000 cars a day. In level E, by the way, the weekend number is considered the maximum in many state agencies. I'll gladly get you all the report of the traffic study. The volume numbers are on page four, and the level of service, A to F, I believe is on page 12. But I will gladly get this to you. Regarding the petition, and I don't want to open a can of worms, but there's been changes. And there have been many changes. And my opinion is that of Peter's is that, in that this petition is illegal only because it violates the city zoning ordinance, section 22-14-1, okay? Which is the adoption and amendment clause in the city zoning ordinances. Regarding the eight lots, you know, 7, 80,000 square, 88,000 square feet to 75. Peter's much better at the math than I am, so I will leave that up to him. My big concern, my big concern actually is disclosure. This is a unique case, okay? And my understanding is that disclosure is normally filed with the appointing authority, which in this case is the petitioner. So this is a very unique case. This is a very unique situation. So my question for you is, have any of you, any of the planning board members sought advice from the State Ethics Commission's legal department regarding disclosure? Since the petitioner is also your appointing authority in such your budget. I think it's an important issue. Peter's great with the numbers and the math. I'm more so concerned about the process. And the process here is disclosure.
Okay. Number one disclosure, I think we're all well aware, it's on every drawing. If he had put Joe Smith on there as the owners, okay?
Yeah.
That would be trying to hide something. But on the drawing, it says Dean J. Mazzarello.
No, I, I
Okay, no, no.
Okay, all right.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to take it point by point, the best, as I see it.
Sure.
Okay. As I see it, yes, some mistakes were made. Mr. Cleese, he admits to it.
Yeah, we acknowledge that, sure.
Okay. What's the, yeah, okay, what's the process? It's a simple enough process for Mr. Cleese. One of two ways, okay? He can go to the city council and add the petition and submit an amended petition.
That's right.
Okay? From seven to eight, I mean, from eight to seven.
Yeah.
Okay? That's a very simple thing. The other thing is, if you don't want to go through that process amendment, you can withdraw the petition
Sure.
without prejudice. Come back the same day
Sure.
five, two minutes later, and submit a new petition that says seven units. And, uh, seven lots. And with the, with the new drawing, with the corrections made.
Sure.
Full disclosure has been made. Okay? That's the process that would go through to the city council, not here. Okay, because it has to go through the clerk. That says, I understand it. Okay? So he understands that. We make a recommendation on the, not the wording of the petition, because we know there's a correction there. And we can make note of that in our verbiage.
Sure.
Okay? And to the city council saying, we understand there's a, there was a mistake made in the drawing. It's 78, whatever the number is. And it's seven lots of configured. But the, the line itself and the property that's to be changed, the essence of that is, do we want that to be changed from, okay, Residence B to commercial? And that's the outstanding, that's the number one question. Okay, these other things can be dealt with properly. And I don't believe ethics has to get involved.
I think what Tom's saying is, is the mayor is an appointing authority. I mean, he's a private landowner as well.
Right.
He petitioned this as a private landowner.
Right.
But because he's the appointing authority of members of the board who are certain things, should it have been disclosed to the state?
Maybe I didn't make myself clear. My question wasn't really, you know, the disclosure of the petitioner being your appointing authority. My question was basically, you know, acknowledgement of you being appointed by the petitioner. You know, some people would say that is potentially a conflict of interest here. We all know, we all agree that, you know, the petitioner is who he is. But my perspective is from your perspective.
But see, Tom, I don't know if there would be any conflict. But I understand what you're getting at. I don't know if there would be any conflict because we're ratified, so to speak, by the council. You know, our names may go up, you know, by, by the mayor to be on the board, or anybody's name that's on a board, but it's the city council that actually votes to say it.
Would you give a negative recommendation, they still could vote it in.
Sal, I would think the city council, council would want you to, you know, verify with disclosure
I think it's a good point.
On your part.
It's a point, but I don't, yeah. That would preclude every board.
But
Yep.
Tom, what we're looking at really is basically, is it contiguous? Is there spot zoning involved?
Does it fit the character of the neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, those types of things, so.
It's attached to
Nothing with the, with the buildout, whatever, when the site plan comes with the building, whatever that may be, that's when we get involved. But right now, we're just a recommendation or, or, you know, a positive or negative.
In Sal, I mean, I also understand that the city council could just totally disregard your recommendation.
Exactly.
And do what they want.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I understand that, but I think, you know, just in the interest of transparency and disclosure, from your end, even on receiving end of your appointing authority's petition. I mean, you have to admit, it is a, it is a unique situation.
What's, what's the non-transparency? We know he's the mayor of the city of Leominster. In order to be the mayor of the city of Leominster, he has to live in the city of Leominster. I don't understand how he's precluded from owning any other real estate from the city of Leominster, just by virtue of him being I, the mayor. And I'm, I mean, I'm looking under the state ethics right now for self, it basically, I would think it would be under self-dealing and nepotism, participating as a state employee in a manner in which you or your immediate family or your business or your future employer has a financial interest is prohibited. So he's not participating in this process. And I think the, where the violation would come in is if we voted no, if we voted to not recommend this, and then all of a sudden, he replaces all of us. Then that's where I think the violation would come in. Not for him to make a, file a petition for a zone change before us. And I could be wrong, but that's my, part of it is common sense and part of me is looking quickly at the state ethics. But I, I don't know, I mean, he has to live in the city. He has to own real estate here. My understanding is to be the mayor of Leominster. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't know of any mayor who doesn't live in this, doesn't
They have to live in the city.
He's not a resident of the city.
He has to be voting.
And so, and then, so I, I don't, and frankly, I don't think, that's not the issue that's before us. If someone wants to file some sort of complaint or make that inquiry to the State Ethics Commission, they can. So what, what's before us right now is a petition for a zone change. And like Sal said, what for us to consider is, I mean, is it, is the zone change void for vagueness? It's not. We know specifically what he wants to do. He wants to change this from Residence B, right, to C, to, to, to commercial. Then we have to determine if it's spot zoning. And to be quite honest with you, that was my original concern. And that's why I went to the, and that, I went to the site visit and I asked Mr. Cleese certain questions about that. And frankly, it is a continuation of a commercial area. And even though north of it is still Residence B, there's a ball field up there, right? And not residence, I mean, there's residences surrounding it. But the biggest point is, is that there's case law that says that there has to be a balancing test to assess spot zoning's challenge. Which hasn't frankly been challenged, only in my own head, from the, from the audience, from the public. But basically, if we determine, or the city council determines that there's economic benefits that accrue to a single-doubt parcel, which arguably could be made, even though it's still, it's not really single-doubt though, it's still an extension. That it does not require a finding of spot zoning where there are also benefits to the general public. Which brings me to my next point, is when I'm looking under what's allowed in that area, which the owner of the property brought up before, and I don't care if he's the mayor.
Well, he's not petitioning as the mayor.
He's not, he's not, but
This could be any of us making the same. We had, Tom, just, just, I just want to throw this in, just excuse me for
Yeah, go ahead.
We have zone changes on petitions come before us constantly. Especially since the new zoning went into effect.
Which is an issue by itself. And that's a third tangent, which you're not going to get to tonight.
But, but I mean, you know, Joe Smith comes in with the same petition. Let's say it isn't the mayor, right?
Say Sal Chacon, part of the planning board comes in. So what the issue is then, you have to recuse yourself.
That's correct.
And you can even, and, and you have to recuse yourself, obviously. And leave the room, and we have to make that disclosure to them, that you're part of the planning board. And that we can make an objective
Recommendation.
Recommendation, notwithstanding you being a member of the planning board. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. But we see this all the time, you know? We just went through a big one on, at the beginning of Pleasant Street. They were going, they wanted to go from B to A. And they weren't doing the spot zoning, but there were enough people against it. I mean, it was, it's a continuing process since this thing has been rezoned, since the city's been rezoned. So I just want, it's not unusual.
I understand. I think, Sal, we got off the track a little bit about now the spot zoning. My real issue was disclosure. Now, you said people do this all the time. This is a pretty unique case, though, about having your appointing authority command
I don't think it has any effect. He might have been, he is reappointed then, okay? He might have been, he is reappointed then, okay? My original appointing authority, appoint was, was Perla.
Well, my.
That was a long time ago.
I would recommend, you know, because I, I trust the process. I like to see it done properly. That, you know, quite simply, a, a simple call to the state ethics commission, you can provision, answer any, you know, questions on, on both sides. I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I don't know, I don't even know if that's up to us. I mean, the final decision is with the city council.
Yeah. Yeah. That's where I was.
And frankly, I would contact our, I would contact the city solicitor before I contacted the state ethics commission. But, and I, again, I don't think that's, again, we're just making a recommendation. But the other point I wanted to make, for Residence B, I mean, he, in that area, you can put in, you need, you need, you need a special permit to put in a commercial greenhouse. You can put in some sort of horticulture. You need a special permit for livestock. You need, you need, you can put in, you can put in livestock agriculture, et cetera, if it's more than five acres. You can put in, with a special permit, poultry and other animals. You can put in recreational outdoor, a sand gravel, rocker stone removal, assisted living facility, a daycare facility, educational use or land owned or leased by the Commonwealth, a government building, a private club by special permit, a church, an accessory apartment by special permit, we discussed that, a bed of breakfast, a detached, single-family dwelling, which frankly would have to be, which would frankly would have to be in keeping with what's there now. An open space development. I'm going through lots of ends. A funeral home, which I think would be the worst traffic.
It could be a lot worse than a single building.
Carol, can I interrupt you in that?
Please.
And then, I promise, I know, I promise.
Well, I'm done, because that's it.
Okay, those sound like worst-case scenarios for residential B. But what about worst-case scenarios for commercial? And let me pose this to you. Is there a possibility with commercial zoning by right, those res, whether the property is sold or developed, is it possible with commercial zoning by right, we could see, if you change the footprint, that we could see a five-story tower with over a hundred twenty parking spaces? Is that a possibility as a worst-case scenario for commercial?
So, you couldn't fit the part.
Well, if you change the footage, so you might have the same square footage of the building. But now, going up five stories, does that make sense?
Still would never get to that point. Well, you know what, see, one of the other things too, whatever goes in there.
For residential, but what about worst-case scenario for commercial by rights?
That's where we have our power.
That's where we get in, now we get a site plan. And there are a lot of specifics on site plan, on height and parking. Density. And those densities, we watch very closely. So you can't just say, I want to build a great big building in there. We don't allow that. You have to have the parking to go along with it.
Say, we're going to put a bank of fifty apartments, what do they say, sixty?
Potential use, what it could become.
That's correct.
Right, okay, so we agree on that, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll leave you guys a good night, thank you.
Thanks.
Do I have anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes, sir. My name is Teresa Juzzi, I live at one seventy-eight Twelfth Street. And I'm simplifying it, I'm concerned about the traffic. It is a nightmare to begin with. And in my inexperience, I'm assuming that there would be less of an impact on the traffic if it remains residential, rather than if it becomes commercial. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay, just to help, to help you out a little bit, if I can.
Jeff?
When it comes time for a site plan, we're, we're putting a boundary today. We don't know. This is, that building that they show is a maybe, a what-if. It has, it holds no water, it's, it's a bucket with a lot of holes in it, okay? When it comes time, that the owner of the property, it could be Mr. Mazzarella, or it could be somebody else. They will then have to come in with a site plan. The site plan comes to this board, and we look at the parking, and we will look at the traffic. Because that, they would come in, if we oversized, they would say, we would require a specific traffic study as you got there from, from Cumberland Farms. And we would have, not a guess, we would have actual figures. And I have a building of so many square feet, or a certain elevation, with so many parking, and, and there is a whole formula that the traffic engineers use, that say, for each business, this is what we expect. So many, so much traffic. So they can pretty much, they get pretty close, they can extrapolate from that. Say, we're going to see fifty cars a day, a hundred cars a day, five hundred cars. I, I don't know what that is today. At that point, we would have the information. We would have the information that the intersection would be affected, or Twelfth Street would be affected. Okay? And, because that would all be in that, it's within the area, so they would have to address all those. And it might mean that, say, okay, hypothetically, please, this, oh, we're going to have a light at Twelfth Street. Okay, because of the added traffic. I don't, I really don't think that would, I don't know. Okay? But that's just a hypothetical thing. Or you might say, you have to change, if you want to pin it in this new building, you're gonna, it's going to go to a D or to a failure. They're, they're not good today, but they're not at a failure. When you drive an intersection to a failure, at that point, you have to make changes to bring it back out of that failure mode. And that, and that could be a reconfiguration of the intersection, or there are numbers.
Could change the cycles on the lights.
Change cycles.
Lanes, turning lanes.
But I am.
That would all be in the site plan that we would do later on. So we would look at it, that we'd try to minimize the impact the best that we can. Okay, so that the homeowners aren't protected.
But generally speaking, am I incorrect in assuming that the impact at this point would be less if there were houses there than there would be several retail, with flying spaces, with bars? And, and is my thinking wrong?
I, I don't know. I, it all depends on the type of business that goes in. You have, you have, you have basically two types of businesses. You have drive-by business, like, you know, and you have destination business. So if you had, like, a movie theater, is a destination business. People go to the, they don't drive by and decide to go to the movies. Okay? But a gift store, okay, is not typically, their business, thirty percent of their business is destination, and seventy percent of their business is drive-by. Say, oh yeah, gee, I might got to pick up something. So that, so they don't create, different businesses create traffic, other businesses utilize traffic. So you have to look, and that's what, that's what a traffic engineer does. I don't do that. Okay, I'm just trying to give you some where-for-all, so it's all, we don't even know until we know what the business is, if it's a restaurant. And then restaurants would come, would come in there, it's commercial. And they have sequence in different times of day. So until we have all that information, we don't know. So all we're looking at.
Isn't there a danger in making decisions with not having very much information?
Well, no, what we're looking at, we're looking for the best, we're looking at the best use of the land. If we can get the best use of the land, okay, that's the benefit of the city. So that's what we're trying, that's what we want to do. And that's, that's the long range, okay? We have to have housing. We have to, you know, in some cases, the best use of the land is, is to have housing. Because without housing, if you, you can't bring industry into the, into the city if you don't have a place for the people to live. So it's a balancing act that we're always trying to do. Okay?
But it could, you know, but it could, I mean, you could put, you know, condominiums in there. You could put, you could put more housing than you would think normal from growing up in Residence B. You know, it might not look like Twelfth Street. Might look like an apartment building, or it might look like something like that, which would.
For more traffic.
Yeah, it would, it would make it worse, it could.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, just trying to.
Yeah. We struggle with the same thing sometimes. We deal with a lot of what-ifs. Do I have anyone else which is, anything? Yes, sir.
Brian Tasta, seven oh five Mechanic Street. Here to speak on a property that, as a director of butter, at three seventy Mechanic Street. I want to make the case tonight for Residence B. We hear an awful lot of talking about parking spaces, where the dumpsters are going to be, and whether or not the material is accurate or not. I don't hear an awful lot of talk about Residence B. Maybe it's a foregone conclusion, I sure hope it isn't. I hope you report out unfavorably for this petition. The best that the residents can hope for is a zero-sum game. With all the new development that's happened down there, the traffic has exponentially exploded. Oddly enough, and it's not wasted on me, the elephant in the room is, the very reason why the petitioner wants to turn it into commercial, is the very reason you shouldn't allow that to happen. The traffic right now, and from my little study that was done when we went down to the, the site last time, I had three separate, separate times that day, just to count traffic. I sat in the bank, counted the traffic. And this is what you should know, it's going by there right now. From ten to eleven in the morning that day, four hundred and ninety cars went in that half hour. From twelve to one, in the dinner hour, the lunch hour, eleven hundred and forty-two cars went by. Okay? And from three to four in the afternoon, before we had our meeting, thirteen hundred and sixty-eight cars went by. So that's an even three thousand cars in two and a half hours worth of sitting at the bank. So, what can the residents hope for from this process? It's a zero-sum game. The traffic is going to get worse if you do nothing. It's going to get really bad if you do something. This is a residence, French Hill. You know French Hill, that had to deal with all kinds of things, like, I don't know, the landfill being the de facto entrance to Seastown. How many more, how much more can you ask of these folks? Okay? And I'll leave this with you. Does Lemonster really need more commercial real estate? Does it? If you drive around, you're going to see a lot of empty, a lot of empty real estate. Okay? Brick and mortar is having a tough time these days. So to actually petition to take residents, you know, taxpayer, homeowner-type folks, and say, you know what, we need to squeeze more stuff into your Residence B. Does it make much sense from the residents' perspective, now, does it? There's very little that they can do. Can't offer you any legitimate reasons to say, jeez, I got, I got all kinds of reasons why this shouldn't happen. I'm just a, on a butter that knows that this will not be good for the people that live there. It'll be good for some people, it'll be really good for some other people. But it's not going to be very good for the folks in, in, in that residence. They, it, it's, the best they can hope for is that they break even. And even that's not going to happen. But it'll be really exacerbated if you vote that out. It'll be good for some, but not for many. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's Dean Mazzarella. I'm just representing myself, I'm not here as the mayor, I'm just representing myself. And I, I just want to say, I, I think I, I won't go over what I said last time. I've owned the property, it's taken me thirty years to assemble these little properties. And I talked to the neighbors over the years and explained, I, I was not going to do housing down there. That's, that was my absolute, I will not be the owner of the property if housing has to go there. I won't. I won't put my name on it. It's not the highest and best interest, and you make the size completely different, that's your decision. My job is to bring it to you, you make your decision, and I hope it's not a political one, but one that's best for the city. And I just won't. And I've let everybody know, my neighbors in the past, I will not, you know, everyone was worried, actually, because I had done the development of the street, and it was a good one. And so they wanted to know what I was going to do, and I've been upfront for thirty years. I will not be the person that puts, it's a pretty decent-sized piece of land. So you, as Sal said, you can put a significant amount of housing there. I won't be the person that puts housing in. But I just want to remind everyone here, because we went through this process where the city contracted with VHP to look at a Mechanic Street overlay. And the purpose was, if you remember, to attract business. Mechanic Street used to be such that a lot of those properties were a business downstairs, and then rental units upstairs, and many times, the person that owned the business lived upstairs. And we got away from that, and then there was a call in the demand. So similar to, what's the insurance company? I want to see C-Mine, but it's.
Ledger.
Ledger Insurance. Similar to that kind of an operation. And, and so we're trying, the city was trying to attract that back to those locations. And if you remember, the recommendation, not by me, not by the mayor, not by anybody, but the VHP and the planning department at the time, was to run a mixed-use overlay, Mechanic Street overlay district, all the way down Mechanic Street, because it made sense. And so it sat, and you can check your records, it sat in committee, there were forty different meetings. No one ever objected to Mechanic Street overlay going all the way to the connector. Nobody, not one person, not from Jazmine Street, from Moss and Drive, Mechanic Street, Twelfth, nowhere. Did anybody show up at forty meetings to oppose it. And at the very last minute, and I have all the tapes, everything I'll share with anybody, the last minute was taken off completely. So, here's what, the Mechanic Street overlay district, so starting at Seventh Street, going all the way into town, this is what you can put there. A library or museum, a bank, business professional, office, a coffee shop, a health club, a restaurant, or a retail store. So from Seventh Street, going all the way east into town, those are the allowable uses. Under special permit, on the mixed-use Mechanic Street overlay district, you can do indoor recreation, motor vehicle service station, gas station mini-mind, car wash, restaurant, takeout, public utility building, convenience store. But I can't put a business on my land. Just, what sense does that make? If you can start at Seventh Street on both sides, go all the way into town, and do all of these things, or get a special permit, but you can't put a business? And remember, I think the last thing is, and I want to go over the whole thing together again. But remember, what I gave you was the maximum. The maximum that we could have, what we started off with when I first met with the neighbors, was eighteen thousand square foot building. I backed off that. No one's saying that there's definitely going to be a building there fourteen thousand square feet. What we're saying, what I'm saying, as the person that owns the land is, I won't exceed that. I won't exceed that. And so, some of it is commercial, some of it is office, it might be all office. I never said all of this is going to be, be commercial, I don't think I've ever said that. I gave you, what I gave you is, and I asked Anthony to do is, to give you some ideas. So I gave you different portions, I gave you, well, this much will be, and I don't know, is this much will be commercial and this much will be office. So that way, we could give you an example of how much parking would be needed. But it could be all office, or a small piece, commercial. I don't know that. So I don't want to get too focused on, you know, this is just, I'm, I think I've given more information than anybody else that's ever come to the planning board in terms of the what-ifs, and being upfront with you as to what exactly is happening. But I, I'll just say again, it's time to do something with the property. And I know that people get used to the fact that there's nothing there. And I get it, I get it, totally get it. People were in opposition to rebuilding my house there, and also my daughter's house there, and people came out against that. But in the end, we probably built the two best, I mean, we invested more in one house, two houses on French Hill than probably anybody has in decades. So I would just say, you know, and leave you with this. I'm not going to do housing down there. I will sell it to somebody else to do something else, and that's not a threat. I'm just being very upfront, so that somebody else doesn't later say, you know, you were, you said you were going to do this. This has always been the highest and best use. Nobody showed up to oppose Cumberland Farms, they generate a hundred to two hundred cars in, in minutes sometimes in the morning. I count forty or fifty people in there at once. There's a project going on across some hole-in-construction, across some of the former building, that's eight thousand square feet. Nobody showed up to oppose that. Nobody showed up to oppose Fidelity Bank. Nobody showed up to oppose any of the projects that have been built down there. And all the meetings that the cities had about promoting and doing development on the former land. And all the meetings that the cities had about promoting and doing development on the former landfill, no one ever showed up to oppose it. We've talked about a golf course. We've talked about baseball. We've talked about making it a fairgrounds. No one ever said, this is going to bring all kinds of traffic. Nobody ever brought this up. So, that's just the record. I'm not making that up. That's all, you know, can be substantial. So, anyway, I guess it's in our hands to make a recommendation on what's best for the city and, and, you know, the total fallout of it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else which was to speak? Do I have any questions from the board?
I make a motion to continue.
Second.
I have a motion made and second it to close the hearing. Do I have any further discussion? If you're not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
opposed say no. Motion carries. Hearing's booked. Yeah, we're right on schedule.
I guess we were in California.
At 6:50 hearing. Public hearing for city council petition 40-18. Kristen Kelly, planning director, amendment article 18, 18th section 22-105, for the Lemington zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. Do I have, we've gotten from Kristen, the proposed ordinance, okay? And a number of questions that, that came up earlier and they were answered by the, the city's, excuse me, the city solicitor. Do you want to take this, Kristen?
Sure.
So to give us a breakdown of what, where you go. And I've got a few things that I've looked up that I want to add to.
Okay. I submitted this petition, I don't remember, but it was introduced as, I worked with Councilor Badanza and he suggested that a good place to start would be to take a look at our existing medical marijuana ordinance and suggest modifications to that document to start the process. It would initiate, you know, questions and, and suggestions for our additional edits. And at that time, we also had obviously a number of questions that we had for our legal counsel, K.P. Law. So what I provided you in your packet were a few different things. This document with the edit track changes on it is the original edited, or the original ordinance, draft ordinance I submitted with the petition. Include, and then on top of that, it includes edits by me and you can't tell the, because it's not color-coded, but that I've done some edits and then K.P. has done some edits as well. So that's this document with the track changes still shown. So you can see the difference between the, the original document and the current. Then there's a packet that shows some questions about recreational marijuana. So these are questions that we've accumulated over time. Some were from back in February, some were from April, that, where I've organized this to show what the question is, what K.P.'s response was and, and action item if there was any, if something needed to be done to incorporate the, the suggested change. In, in the meantime of all this, the Cannabis Control Commission released their final, the final regulations in, I want to say March 15th or so. So that we had a better understanding of what they will be requiring for the application process and for regulation going forward. So they started accepting applications as of April 1st. And we've had a number of inquiries as to what the city plans to do, but as far as I know, I don't know if anyone's actually taken it for a agreement, but that's a city, it's a city council special permit, so I'm not sure what communication they've had. They can start issuing licenses, the Cannabis Control Commission, as of July 1st. So, there's a number of questions here that were answered by K.P. Law. Some, you have some action items. For example, one question was, how do marijuana testing laboratories fit into this process? Should they be included in the ordinance language? They provide a definition of independent lab testing and basically say, if you want to treat them differently, you can and you have to include that language in the ordinance. So if you want, you want to have them have separate, separate requirements or guidelines, then the other types of marijuana facilities, you can do that if you outline it in your ordinance. So, my action item is, do we want to treat laboratories differently than other marijuana establishments? And if so, you need to add such language. And then I do include a list of, I get very confused as to all the different types of facilities and where they fall on this organizational tree. So I made an outline. Basically, a marijuana facility is anything. Any sort of, any sort of marijuana facility, medical, recreational, or what they also call adult use is recreational as well. Then it breaks down under there for a couple definitions specifically regarding medical marijuana. And then under the next bullet is definitions that fall under the recreational and adult use. So it just, that helped me understand a little bit better what some of these things are and where they fall on the tree. So, this is where we're at right now. And this board would provide a recommendation back to the city council. Maybe your recommendation includes some additional questions or adding some additional language. But this is the material that we have.
Okay. Thank you. I went through it, I tried to get online, I did get online this afternoon, and picked out a different thing from it. It's kind of interesting, when I did the, the section on the bottom, it says you click here and get recommended ordinances. And when it did that, it stopped being said, we have a malware problem. Don't go any further. So I couldn't get that from, from the state. Seems like they, they're blocked up. A couple of things that I, I looked at here and I think we want to have two ordinances. Okay? That's, because I look in, you know, like right on one of their things on page 18, it says, they prohibit a medical marijuana treatment facility center and experienced marijuana establishment operator operating a medical marijuana treatment center and a marijuana establishment at the same location.
They prohibit it?
They prohibit it. So you can't have...
You can't have medical and you can't have recreational at the same place.
In the same place.
But we, we knew that. Isn't that part of the reg?
That's...
I thought they talked about people who were going to start selling.
But that's, that's one thing that, these are just things that I picked out that said, tells me that I want to separate it out the best I can. Rather than having one for medical marijuana and one for, and one for, for the, for the regular marijuana. The other part is the...
Regular.
Yeah, the, the commercial marijuana.
Sorry.
Recreational.
I think it's all ridiculous. The state give guidelines on all of this?
Well, the state has all kinds of guidelines, but the city also, we, we also can have local guidelines. And we can go things like, one of our things is, you can't have, you can't have it, anyplace you can't have smoking tobacco. The thing is, this section will still not apply to a person who consumes marijuana or marijuana products in a designated area of a marijuana establishment loaded, located. So they're saying, and that the town has voted to allow consumption, you know, on those premises. So in what, in this section, they're telling me that the city should be having a, a location where people are allowed to smoke marijuana.
My understanding is the final regulations do, they, they try to tackle the issue of onsite consumption.
Right.
And it was so corny. And I figured, let's just start with, you know, the basics. And so they left out all of the, the details about onsite consumption. And it's currently, it's not allowed. They will be revisiting that as this process goes forward. But I believe I had one of the questions to K.P. They said, because my question was, my question was, concerning on-premises consumption, marijuana cafes, et cetera. I understand that these details have been left out of the final regs until more time is spent developing the details. Should the city be proactive and include some language on these types of facilities in our draft ordinance? The answer was, regulations for onsite consumption may be a full year away, so there's no need to act proactively in my opinion. You may want to wait and see what the CCC starts proposing later this year and decide what direction you want to go in. I note however, that as the statute stands now, the only way for onsite consumption to be allowed in a municipality is if there is a citizen petition signed by at least 10% of the voters and then such use passes on a local ballot question at a biennial state election.
Right.
Unless the statute is changed or the CCC reads it some other way, which at present seems unlikely, onsite consumption is effectively prohibited absent a citizen petition process. So...
Yeah. Yeah, but that's, you know, see...
It's really...
Let's not get ahead and think about our own stuff because they've already thought of that and they're working on that. So they prohibited it.
Oh, that, that's what I'm saying is, it's, it's confusing. And then, and then, um, it's, that is, that part is definitely confusing. Can't even get the final, final draft because there's some kind of a glitch in the system. So I couldn't do that today. I hope there was my system or something.
I'm sure it was.
It, it's definitely a problem. I just think that the, combining the medical marijuana statute we have, I think we should leave that as is. My personal opinion. And, and we can use that as a guideline, but create a, a new, because a lot of the verbiage would be the same, but create a new ordinance strictly for recreational marijuana. Because the other thing is, it says in here, like they said, they have to be separated. One of the areas that I found is not located within, is not located within 50, 500 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing. And, and it says, a document, a bylaw that reduces the distance. Well, we could reduce that down to 400 feet. But we can increase it to 1,000. And as we have it today, it's 1,000.
It is. Something to note about the buffers, it's another question that I have in here.
Yeah.
Marijuana facilities cannot be, you can't effectively zone it out of existence. And the larger those buffers are, the more restrictive they are obviously. And, and it could make a case for, you know, that it's sort of written that way purposely to make it harder for facilities to find a, find a location that meets all those requirements.
And, and the last point is that we allow the medical marijuana in industrial. And it's a manufacturing process. It's a growing process. And the average Joe Smith does not go there. Recreation marijuana is a commercial process. We don't allow commercial and industrial. So therefore, we'd have to rezone also the zoning to allow that in industrial, a commercial.
Or you just keep it separate.
Or, or keep it separate.
Alcohol would be industrial. Recreational is going to be a commercial industry.
And, and would be commercial.
Is it going to come with a dispensary and a growing place?
Well, they're within 1,000 feet of each other. And, you know, see that's...
But they're both in, but that's an industrial, both of them.
That's industrial.
Correct.
But there was two, two buildings and then...
And they were within 1,000 feet, right?
They're saying that...
That first one was a dispensary. The first, the one that's being built right now.
The other one was a grow facility.
So the dispensary is in...
But the recreational, the, the retail will go in the commercial.
Would be commercial.
Correct.
Now, it just happens that Astraham, I think, was in the paper. And I, I don't know what their ordinance looks like. I couldn't get it. But they, they just approved a recreational marijuana and, and, you know, and they, they actually say on FitzCraig Road, which I think is Route 12, there's a section that, that is commercial, that they allow a, I'm going to call it a shake-in pot shop. Okay? And it's a retail establishment. And in the industrial zone, they, is your grow facility.
I don't think you could limit it to a industrial zone.
But if we, but if we make it, Kristen, does your book have the medical in here yet?
Is it in the...
Because if we, if we allow it in commercial, aren't we going to, or industrial, are we going to make it by special permit of the city council anyway? Isn't that how it is now? They can't just, it's not as of right.
No, it's not as of right.
And, and so why, and so why do we have to have recreational marijuana facilities in, or retail in commercial? Just because it's a commercial building?
I asked a version of this question to K.P. So, the way it's written, the draft, is that any, any marijuana use, recreational or medical, allows, question seven. We plan to allow it in any marijuana use, in the industrial zone only. Currently, retail uses are not allowed in the zone. Would be best to add a line in the table of uses specifically for this use. And the, K.P. responds, yes, when the council has essentially settled on the terms of the draft ordinance amendments, I would recommend that RMDs are medical facilities and marijuana establishments be specifically identified in the table of uses rather than relying on the other types of retail, retail, manufacturing, et cetera. So call it out as a specific use and then it can, you can have it in a specific zone by a special permit, city council and site plan.
Rather than just an industrial. Because there might be another area or use that, maybe we want to have, you know, as, you know, as I was told, or as I understand it, was the medical marijuana thing was, that they were going to take, and it's more like akin to the bylaws on alcohol. And similarity that, you know, placement is allowed like a package store is allowed and is controlled by, in that case, by the license commission. And, and how that is set up. So, versus, you know, how, how we do other things. So it has, it's a little bit different in the fact that it's more of a retail establishment. And this other thing like onsite consumption and all the rest of that could be addressed at that time. I don't think we're, I'm not ready to, you know, act on this thing. I think we, I don't know if we should have a, a separate, you know, meeting, a work session, or try to work out, go back to the city council and see if we can put a joint work session together to try to hammer out all these things and, and come up with something. But there were so many questions here. And not only from us, but from the state. That I, I make a recommendation to the city council. I'm having a real problem. Okay?
I've been trying to gather questions and comments so that we can figure out how to address them. So that's part of the process.
Yeah, I, my, my recommendation is that, you know, I'd like to, you know, extend this out. And I'm willing to serve on it. I don't think, I'd like to have somebody else on this board serve and form a, a specific committee between the planning board and the city council and look at this thing, item by item. Okay? Go through it and have one, not to, it could end up very similar, but leave the medical marijuana the way it is and come up with a new marijuana for, because there are some idiosyncrasies in there. Where we might want to, as we said, location that we want, might want to allow it someplace else as a commercial entity. And that, that's my problem and my, I'm having it this time.
Yep, I understand. Would you be amenable to, in the short term, to, if I bring that question to ask K.P., Would you be amenable to, in the short term, to, if I bring that question to ask KP, should we have separate ordinances? Is there a benefit to that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's fine.
Just get their opinion on that and just see what the, yep.
Yeah.
I will do that.
That, that's, that's what I say, I'm looking at it and, there's so much convoluted stuff and there's so much in here. It's that I have, I have a real problem. And in good conscience, making a recommendation, because I don't have all the answers today. So I, I don't know how I'd make a recommendation to the city council. Okay? I want to open, open to the audience, it is a hearing if there's anybody else, but I have a counselor back there. So I want to give her a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to respectfully request, as you probably expect, to give this further time. Take your time and look at it. We approved medical marijuana two years ago for, for a couple of sites. They're not even built yet. We thought there'd be an opportunity to look at what worked, what didn't work. But since then, so many different things have happened. There are 156 communities that have a moratorium. There are 60 that have banned it outright. There were some that banned it for just certain particular things. They'll allow growing, but they won't allow any retail. I mean, there are a number of different things you can do in a community. I understand legally that the draft might be proper, but it doesn't mean it says what we want it to say. I mean, it just means that it's legally correct. We had prime wellness down to the council for the medical marijuana part. And now, I listened to this body the last time, tried to figure out if the building was a same building, side by side, two separate buildings, couldn't even make a decision on it because nobody could really figure it out. When they were downstairs to us, their comments about banking, because that was a concern I had, there is no, everything has to be a cash transaction, we all know that. There is absolutely no way, you need a debit card, a check, there's no banking institution to do it. They said, we have Century Bank, they're the one bank that's going to support us. We're working with them, we have no questions. One page of the Banker and Trasman a week ago, which is the trade newspaper for real estate, banking and attorneys in some cases, they're named in a lawsuit for Rico racketeering. Because they're, they're challenging state law.
The Hells Angels, they got the Hells Angels on.
You know, it's illegal, federally illegal. Two days ago, and I know there are members that are trustees and maybe still are trustees and I know Paul, you're at the college, but your college president made a strong statement about Pittsburgh. And he says, you outlined the university's concern with the proposed zoning ordinance that would allow non-medical marijuana retailers to open on Main Street East of Gotham. Then he goes on further to say, the doorstep of our campus included in this district. Then he says, regardless, Lafferty has already expressed his stance on the issue, which calls for keeping these real estate retailers away from the campus. The campus and the city of Warratt had to revitalize the North Street carter and to more, make it more family-friendly feel. The parents travel this route on a regular basis. In addition, a retail marijuana shop would not enhance reception of the area and could be detrimental to enrollment. He's not going to allow it at the college, but I think this is a key phrase and it's something I've been saying for a long time. It will always be easier to add locations once the implications are then reassessed. Alternatively, the removal of locations that result in unanticipated and undesired consequences will be far more difficult to address. And I think that's a real issue. Let's be sure this is what we want to do. Let's be sure we're doing, we're making Lomonsburg where we want it to be. Let's look at a lot of the issues that we're, that we have to deal with. If there's somebody in the community that has a gun permit and they're caught smoking marijuana, they lose that and is subject to a $500 or $1,000 fine. There are so many more implications that people don't understand. And there are so many issues that we have to look at. I, I just think as planners, I think you people need to be looking at it a little more carefully. We have a city council that wrote the ordinance. You weren't, of course, been working with it. That, that's fine, but you people are the plans for the community on what this community ought to look like. And I think there's, it was passed in Lomonsburg 5149, you know that? But there are a lot of people, it's not right. There are a lot of people that have said to me, when they voted for it, they voted for it to be legal in Massachusetts. I didn't vote for it to be in Lomonsburg. I mean, they're in Lomonsburg, but you know what? If I'd had my way and I thought about it early enough, I would have asked to put it on the ballot as a non-binding referendum. To really truly get a feel of what Lomonsburg wants, what the Lomonsburg people want for their community. So I'm asking you to, to really take your time, look at this, do the committee that you're suggesting and, and take your time looking at all the, all the issues. I have a lot of, you know, I've been working with the MMA on this for years. And I, I really think that, you know, I'll be happy to offer some information as well. But, you know, I'm just hoping that you take your time and, and look at it closely. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like, can I just add one thing to what Claire was saying? There is a process by which the city can vote to, to not allow it in the city. It's a two-step process and involves a ballot, you know, initiative. But there is a process and it could be worth looking into that if you wanted to, you know, put that to the people.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to table. Do you want to table to a definite time?
I, I just, this is a discussion period. I hear what you're saying, Sean, but I'm fully satisfied with the proposed, what's proposed before us. And I think we should get something in place. And I think it's better to have recreational and medical wrapped up into one, to have some consistency and not have two separate ones. I think it just adds to confusion, but I see what you're saying and I, and I get it. But that's just my.
Okay. Yeah. I, I think there's more thought that's going to be put into it. Like, it's such confusion that's, until we can get some, some more answers and. Yeah, okay. So. I have a motion on the table. Actually, the discussion would be on the motion. I don't have any. So I'll call for the vote on favor to, oh, yes, I do. Do you want to go to table with different time? Do you just want to, to the next meeting?
No, table for future information and.
Okay.
Say, we're going to do this in two weeks.
It's an, it's an open public hearing right now, so.
Yeah, so, so.
Continue it or.
Well, we're going to continue it, but we have to, I mean, and do what, just nothing? I mean, this.
No, the recommendation I would like to make is that we table it. And the recommendation I'd like to make is to, to reform, be a committee formed between the city council and the planning board to, to look at this and to try to get the final draft from the, the state.
So again, let's continue the hearing. You can explore that in the interim and then.
Right.
Open up the hearing again in two weeks and provide an update as to where we stand.
Right. Well, he might, he might get a. No, but at least he can say, okay, we got a committee together. Here's the committee and the table.
Okay. So you withdraw your table, just want to continue for two, the next meeting. Your second, do you agree to withdraw the second? Okay, the motion is changed to continue for two weeks. Any, any further discussion?
No.
And then call for the vote on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
Motion carries.
What, to what time, to be safe time?
Oh, whatever is scheduled.
What do you have?
6:30.
Um, we have one, well, we're going to have one at 6:30, um, 6:45.
Yeah.
That's the only one.
6:45, cool. Continued, I have a motion made and seconded to continue and it was a eight to one vote. All in favor of saying, is that with it? What am I doing? Five to one. That's all right. Okay. Yeah, I just, I'm looking for my agenda. I have mixed up all my papers. There we go, I got it.
After all these, there should be an easy one, Sean.
Yeah, good thing a vote.
Or one of the on, I'll say.
Deep vote. Public hearing for city council petition, 4118, Kristen Kelly, planning director. Men, section nine, section 2260, or the Lomonsburg zoning ordinance to add language requiring deep observation hole testing for stormwater infiltration detention areas. Is there anyone wishing to speak on that matter?
I will speak on behalf of the DPW, if that's all right. I have an email here I can read where they, and it should have been in your packet providing. It was actually part of, part of the petition, the, the draft language as well as the reason behind it. So the testing to do with Mrs. Mark Camerini, who is the assistant DPW director and engineer. After the DPW has seen the deep hole test, they can review the infiltration and recharge design and be confident that the way it has been designed will work properly. Reviewing the deep hole and the design to make sure the infiltration and recharge systems work properly helps to prevent flooding impacts on flooding properties and on city roadways. Most engineers perform soil testing in the infiltration recharge areas in order to design them. Therefore, we will just need to coordinate this testing with, they will just need to coordinate the testing with the DPW. Many cities and towns require deep hole testing in the infiltration and recharge areas. They may not all require that the testing be inspected, but the DPW feels it's necessary in order to keep everything in check. I'd like to add to that, that this is a condition that the DPW puts on pretty much most site plan or special permit department head comments. Something that they, and so this would be, you know, just adding it to the zoning instead of listing it separately as a condition. The other thing I wanted to add is I did get some feedback from.
Board of Health.
The Board of Health, which should be in there as well, in your packet. Chris Tanou asked me, and I referred the question to Mark Camerini, does your proposed regulation require the consultant to be a Mass EP certified soil evaluator? This is someone who has passed a certification to determine the highest level of groundwater based on colors caused by oxidation and reduction of free iron. Most engineering companies will have someone who's got certification. And so I forwarded this to Mark to get his opinion and he said, yes, we should probably state that the deep hole should be performed by a certified soil evaluator. So I would add that language to the draft, which is part of the first.
Yep, I like that. That was good. Go to Chris to pick up on that.
I move we adopt that as amended.
I have a motion made, so I, I second. Do we adopt that?
This is the hearing, close the hearing.
Close the hearing, I got to close the hearing.
I'm not voting anything.
Okay, I got to open the hearing, and hearing is open. Do we have any discussion on deep hole?
I move we close the hearing.
Really want an answer?
No. Okay. Hearing is closed.
Well, no, we're going to make a motion.
Make it closed to hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Yeah, we did that.
No, we didn't.
Made a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. Okay. Regular meeting, both are.
Patrick Pearl, Ben Frederick.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Salvador Chacon.
Yeah.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Carol Torio.
Here.
Carlos Carrión.
Okay, minutes of previous meetings.
You have two sets of minutes.
March 5th.
Motion to approve the March 5th, 2018 minutes.
Have a motion, Michelle, to approve March 5th, 2018. Any additions, deletions or corrections? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries.
Motion will accept the April 2nd, no, second again.
Fred, make the motion on April 2nd to accept. Do I have any discussion, additions or deletions? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. Plans submitted, ANR proposal for Florence Street, two lots on South Side of Florence Street, instantly of Lancaster. We're breaking all night.
You're breaking this for four, this is my entire social life.
I thought that was a cardigan cutout of you on the chair.
My boss already thinks that. Frank Prestonwood and the Mayhem Associates. I propose a two-lot ANR for an existing piece of private property in case it was a cemetery on Florence Street. Turns out, there's enough land there for two lots with adequate front with, and here. You're coming off of. Langford, it's the other part of Florence. That's the interesting part.
It's off the line.
Yeah, no, you're in the Florence, but the other.
The other end.
So you take three and four with one lot and you're making them into two?
No, it's, it's actually one lot right now.
Cemetery right back.
Yeah, you're making them into two.
Into two, exactly.
Motion to endorse, second.
Thanks, everybody.
Motion made and seconded to, to endorse. Any additions, any corrections? Hear none, call for the vote? Say aye?
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries.
I'll get even with you about the cardboard.
Was a compliment. Happy to behave yourself.
Okay, no business, Willard Street preliminary subdivision approval. Okay, guys, which one do we like?
I don't like either, but. The single entrance.
I like the single entrance.
I like the, I like the double.
It's like the Jamaica way.
Well, I, I have to say.
What do you do with the single entrance?
Oh, that's a dead entrance, like a prospect, yeah.
Which one?
Prospect Terrace.
Prospect Terrace?
Yeah, but they're one way, I mean, the side.
With the median in the middle.
Yeah, the median.
But this is, this is houses in the middle.
Well, no, it isn't.
Well, it would be.
You got house three otherwise.
I don't like either one of them off.
What's that? I think.
Why does the ordinance require more than one? Why is that different than this? Because it looks like, so why is that different? And what happens if a tree falls, what happens if there's an accident, what if there's something?
Well, that's, that's why.
That's why you have to.
If, if we're going to have, you know.
I get it, doesn't look.
I don't think it really makes a big difference if you widen the first 100 feet for the first turn. To me, it makes more sense. It doesn't clutter the neighborhood like it would.
You don't have two streets, you know, entering and exiting.
Right.
With a close box that's one each other. Because all of a sudden, you let one out and there's another one coming.
I think, I think if you, if you came in at Fred Lake, like Prospect Terrace, if you had a divided entrance for the first 100 yards or whatever that is, okay? And then it branches off and it makes it, that, that would probably.
I mean, they could probably do that also. They could probably widen it to 38 feet and put a median in between.
And then, then.
Oh, you mean on plan B, on plan B.
Yeah, and you have a single entrance. Basically.
I'd like to talk to DPW about that before I propose it.
Right.
But I understand what the board's asking. What we did was we tried to make it so that if we were circling back, that that first leg would be less than 500 feet.
Yeah.
I particularly like that one.
So you, now you have the big loop around and stuff.
I don't, I don't.
I'm not sure if there's a lot of benefit to it, but I, I understand.
The two streets, I don't like, I don't like a house with road on both ends.
Well, it gets confusing when they.
You have a road in front and the back.
No, the new layout, the new layout opens it up a little bit, so that, that effect is kind of gone.
Yeah.
But I understand.
It's only by 150 feet at most, right? Well, from 160 to 350.
Well, it doesn't clutter Willard Street where two of them, you got that one house that you're going to, they're the house.
We're going, we're going to need to do a traffic study on this one anyways.
Yeah.
So I, I think what we should do is, we're not adverse to widening that front section. But I'd like to have, when we come to definitive, I'd like to have DPW's input on that before we propose it. And I'd like to have a traffic consultant. You know, I can't imagine why they would say it wouldn't be beneficial, but I'm just thinking ahead of, of, I don't want to box ourselves into the board requiring a divided entry if we get to the traffic point. But I, I guess maybe if we, if we, if the board is in favor of the single entrance with us during the definitive phase providing justification for either keeping it 28 feet or widening out to a certain dimension that everybody is amenable to relative to DPW and traffic. Does that affect that?
I will, you know, preclude the thing, said, I go to Florida, I'm in, I'm in a, a park, okay? a park, okay, for fifty-five and over. And we have a single entrance. We have nine hundred and seventy-four units for all single family homes.
That works.
Okay, and there's one entrance. So, it's.
Well, I don't know if it works.
So, it's not, that's, you know. I, I think we, we do have some, and, and they have some issues with hurricanes and trying to get people up quick.
Plus, they're all eating.
But, but, there are a lot of them.
They drive slow anyway.
Calling over fifty-five.
I can't see them sitting right in there.
It's close to it.
I'm close to it. I'm knocking on the door. But, uh, and so I see, you know, the single entrance, and we are, even if we're down there, we're looking for, they're trying to, what, with a, an emergency entrance, which we're gonna have to pay dearly for. But that's only gonna be an emergency entrance, in the case there's a tornado or, that they come up quick and they say, okay, everybody get your, get out of here.
But you're still considering a second entrance, though. I, I prefer the other one with the two.
But that's nine hundred and seventy-five units, Carol. Okay?
Well, it's not.
It's been like that for fifty years.
When I talk about a lot of, I'm talking about a lot of things during Willow Street.
But I, and they are associated.
You know, that's right on the corner.
So that's why I prefer the single entrance.
Two streets there coming out within a hundred and fifty feet of each other is problematic either way. There's no way we can find another egress.
And traffic doesn't change. So it's not, you're not gonna get more cars cause you get two.
No, no.
Streets. You're gonna have maybe two cars coming out at the same time.
Right.
Going this way.
Right.
With one entrance, you won't get that.
That's right, no, I, I, exactly. But, but I still don't like the configuration and think there should be another way out somewhere else. And I don't know, you know, how hard you tried to find that. I know you can't go out through Lakeshore.
Okay, so, so it was a process of elimination with anything. We couldn't go out towards Lakeshore because we don't, there's a piece of land in between that we don't own, that we, that someone else owns.
Cool, I'm just curious, it's only a little strip, right?
It's a strip around the entire perimeter. You, you could.
It's just that one little strip.
It's the association.
The association, I don't think it's the association.
You can't get there because of the fact that there's wetlands where that strip is.
Right.
Okay, one. The, the other would be gonna go over to Castle Land, and it's a ten-foot wide strip of open space that the city owns, or will own. Okay, that's part of the open space development.
Well, can't we modify something on that to get a second egress?
On the end, on the, uh, end of the cul-de-sac, there are houses built. So you have, you have.
How about going past the Castle Land and coming out on the street that enters into Sterling? You'd have to put too much pavement, right? We're gonna have to dig too much.
We don't own the land all the way down to Sterling.
But there's gotta be, I, I just can't believe we can't find another way out. That's all I'm saying. You know, it might cost more.
Nope, it's, what's in front of you is what we're proposing.
Thirty-two instead of twenty-four now.
What's in front of you is what we're proposing.
Right, so, I get it.
So, we, we, we have one neighbor that we worked with to open up that intersection.
Yep.
Okay, to widen it out and create more of a loop road configuration. If you want the two, that's fine. I personally think that the one makes more sense because like, like Tom said.
Oh.
You're not gonna increase the amount of traffic, you're just gonna increase the amount of movements.
Right.
By having extra turning movements in that, along that stretch.
And I agree with that.
It's another.
It's on the outside of the.
No, I agree with that, I agree with that, but I just don't agree with the whole plan.
I just think it should be a thirty-four foot opening, say, instead of a twenty-eight or a thirty.
I don't, I would wanna see the two entrance.
Right, it might not be that it's thirty-four feet paved all the way open, but that's what DPW wants, but it might be that it's thirty-four feet total with a hill in the middle, or even, even a, a, we've done it before with a concrete body that's leveled with a rumble strip on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, the plows can go over it without any problem. And it's just, it's just a, a visual aid to, to people getting in and out.
Yeah.
I, I just wanna point out that the department heads have not seen the most recent version of this, we got it late last week, so they've only seen the, the original, just, I don't have any additional comments.
I, I would bet that they would like this, uh, one year's brought us.
Yeah, the DPW actually in the last one said they prefer the single entrance.
Well, of course they're gonna say that.
Fire department.
But why? But what's their reason? Cause it's less work for them? Or is it because of, for this, for safety reasons? I, I, I don't, I like Sal, I don't like the plan at all.
Now, now, you have two entrances, you have two big piles of snow at the end that are blind spots, because every road at the end of every street gets full of snow.
And they can't get out of one quick enough to get out of the other one quicker.
Right, so.
So they zip over.
Why have four piles of snow at the end of four, of two streets? Cause all the snow gets piled at the end of all these roads. In all the corners, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Any more discussion on this? Do I have a motion to?
To what?
Someone, oh, a motion to recommend one of the.
Are we recommending these, or are we?
It's a preliminary design.
It's, it's preliminary design.
Yeah, it's just preliminary.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the one entrance.
Configuration.
Configuration against the two.
I'll second that.
I have a motion made and seconded. Okay, for the single entrance.
And it's a point there, so it's.
And, and then, I think to go along there with, that entrance is wider.
Right.
Than it's shown on the current drawing.
Come back with it, you know, with it.
With the new plan, I think.
With the new plan showing a widen, and whatever the DPW wants to do, get their, you know, opinion on it, and they're gonna agree, and come back, but.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No. No, opposed. Aye, did we say aye or nay?
Nay.
Nay.
It's a tie.
It's a tie?
So, who voted for this? Put the record.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, no, no, no.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, no, he's yes, yes, yes.
Paul, Sal, Carol, no's.
Yep.
Okay, so, just a point of order. The preliminary plan that was submitted, we should be voting on that, and then recommending A or B for the ultimate.
Well, that's, that's real good.
You're not gonna change the rules now, then?
No, the first one.
That's so like you.
He, he made a promotion.
I mean, you, you presented two plans tonight, you can pick one of the two, and now that you don't like the result of the vote, now you're changing, now you're changing what the vote should be.
Carol, 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 we, we get a no vote, we get a tie, okay? So, so at that point, it's a no vote, so we, we'll take and on, on one of the other presentations that were made to us. Okay, we got the other two, one was with the, the two roads that were closed together and, and there was the second one that was.
No, that's off the table.
So that's off the table.
We revised, submitted a revised preliminary plan. The two entrances on Willow Street. Okay?
Or the one.
Or one.
Right.
And, and to Carol's point, the motion was made by Tom to go with the single road.
Right.
So I'm asking to consider the other one.
Well, we're gonna tie.
No, we have to, yeah.
So when there's a tie, it's just.
It's a no.
It's a.
Well, technically, I think it's actually, it's actually deniable, because I think that the chair can only vote to break a tie.
That's correct.
I can make a tie.
Oh, no, that's correct.
I can make or break a tie.
Okay.
He can't, yeah, but if, if, if it isn't a tie prior, you can't, you're not.
I can make a tie.
Well, it wasn't tied.
It wasn't tied.
But that was with his vote.
Yeah, I voted, I voted aye to make a tie.
It wasn't tied, actually, you made a tie.
I made the tie. I can make, that's, that's, that's the power of the, the chair, you can make or break a tie.
Make a motion to.
So somebody can make a motion to.
Well, make a motion.
That's why I don't wanna.
It's two.
Make a motion on the, the other, the other plan.
I feel it'll be the same vote.
Who's gonna make the motion?
Who's gonna make the motion for that?
You are?
It's gonna be one of your three?
No.
Maybe that's not the reason I voted no.
Okay.
Right, I'll, I'll make the motion to put it on the table, we recommend a, the two street option.
We just don't like the.
You know, you know what I don't like? I, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna second that motion, okay? Cause I'm not gonna be a jerk about it. But I'll tell you why I don't, you know, I'll tell you why I don't like it, cause they could do other things. They could put in fewer lots to make this work instead of another source of egress. And I think, I think that you're sticking it to us when we moved, when we didn't like the two parallel streets so close together, you moved it out, so now instead of twenty-four lots, now we have thirty. And I think that's your way, you're saying, well, you didn't like this, well, now we're gonna do it this way, and plus we're gonna put in six more houses, so take that. That's how I take that, but I'm gonna second that motion, because I'll give them credit for the creativity, and I'll tell you something else, I'll tell you something else, that, that the reason that this is so emotional for me is because what's going through my head right now is Armin Mallett saying, this city is full of.
Dead-end streets.
Dead-end streets. And I'm tired of it. And if he were here right now, he'd lock out that door. He's done it before, and I know he would have done it again. So with that, I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion, cause these people's paid a lot of money for this, for this land, they're looking to develop it, and that's always my, that's always my philosophy in this. I'm not gonna try to oversee or dictate on somebody who paid a lot of money for their hard-earned money on, on property. It just better be a good plan, and I know this is preliminary, I look forward to the definitive.
Okay.
If it passes.
If it passes, that's true.
If it passes. Okay. I have a motion made and seconded, and we've had discussion. I'll call for the vote.
This is for the two, two streets.
The revised plan he brought in today.
Correct. The two entrances. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
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 I didn't hear you vote.
I said no. I don't like that.
It's defeated.
Three, two.
So, I guess you gotta come up with a new plan.
No, actually, we can just submit the definitive now, and you have to give us.
We'll go to your definitive.
You have to give us a, a denial, your reason for denial, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Who said yes?
Carol.
Carol.
And Paul.
Paul.
You did yes to that one.
I think it needs the ordinance, I like it.
Okay.
Well, it means the ordinance.
Uh, four point two, city council petition, thirty-three eighteen, Dean J. Masarala. Change the zoning of eight lots, that is, seven lots. Of land from the residence B zoning district to commercial zoning, district located along the north side of Mechanic Street and the south side of unimproved portion of Glendale Street, and also the unimproved Milton Street and adjacent portion of Glendale Street. All as shown on the plan entitled Plan to Accompany Petition for a Zoning Change. Limits to math, prepared for Dean J. Masarala, dated January tenth, twenty eighteen, by Whitman and Bingham Associates LLC. Okay. Members? Discussion. What do we wanna do with this?
My feeling, I, I just, just, I think we'd have more control of what goes in there in site plan with the commercial piece versus the residence B piece. Because as of right in residence B, I think they could put some monster projects in there. If he sold that land, and you had somebody that came in and wanted to put a bank of apartment buildings in there, that could be a real possibility, because, you know, you have the density requirements around it, you have parking limitations, but I think it's the lesser of two evils, even though I think there's an evil there, I think it's the lesser of two evils. I sat there a couple days. I, I missed the day we were scheduled, cause I thought it was for Tuesday. And, you guys went Monday, but, but I sat there, and I, I do know that the, the traffic going through there is incredible. But I also tried to figure out, because of the light stages, a lot of that flow, I could take a left pretty much, you know, I was trying to figure out how to protect Tall Street and French Hill as well, how do you protect those neighborhoods? And I could have gotten out of there pretty easily with not that long of a wait. And I went on two separate occasions, and I went in the morning once, there was rush hour in the morning from about six-thirty to eight, and I went, you know, I went from four-thirty to five-thirty, quarter to six. I think it's the lesser of two evils, that's my, that's my belief now. Because the others, we can't control, it's by right. If it went to commercial, it would have to come back to site plan, uh, and, and we have Uh, and, and we have control over that process. Um, which would limit the parking, which would limit, uh, the size of the building or, or the configuration of the building, which would, would give you a traffic flow, which would push us into, uh, getting traffic studies if we needed it. Um, all of that. So, I mean, that's my feeling right now on that. I don't know how everybody else feels because I know everybody went at separate times to look at that as well. I just think it's the lesser of two evils because you know something's gonna happen there.
So I, I, um, I agree with Sal. I think, so the way I looked at it was what the process is that a petition has to go through a zoning amendment, what the planning board's role is. So there's three ways to petition for a zoning amendment. I won't go through all three of them because it's almost nine o'clock. But the, but one of the ways is an individual landowner may propose an amendment designed to affect the property. And that's, I think, falls into that category. There's three ways to do that. And the one, one is where attractive lands may be rezoned by simply changing its district designation, usually by a simple map amendment, which I, in my opinion, this is, is. And the example they give is a residential lot may be reclassified to commercial or industrial. So then, you know, then you have to determine in substance if it should pass. And one is, as I mentioned before, whether the amendment would be considered void for vagueness. That's not the case here because it's simply asking for it to be, go, go from Residence B to, to commercial. So then you have to take into consideration, what, what I did is whether or not it's considered spot zoning, and I discussed that before. And that happens when a zone change is designed solely for the economic benefit of the owner of the property receiving special treatment and is not in accordance with a well-considered plan for the public welfare. And in my opinion, that's what the people who are opposed to it are really arguing here for some reason. And I'm saying, and I'm saying that in a, that it's, it's a reasonable argument to make. But the, when, that's just the basic black letter law on it. But when you look at case law, they've determined that economic benefits that accrue to a single-doubt parcel do not require a finding of spot zoning where there are also benefits to the general public. And, and that's where I think Sal's comments come in about if, if it zones commercial, even if it's allowed by right, it still has to come before us in certain circumstances with a site, with site plan approval. Then we can determine methods of ingress and egress, the number of parking spaces that are required, the size of the building, the lighting of it. Um, we're gonna require a traffic study, et cetera. So that's why I think, um, that we have more control over it if it zones, if it's zoned. And I also think it's in keeping with the neighborhood with a huge gas station across street. And this is my anecdotal opinion, and I drive there a dozen times a day. There's a lot of cars, and there's a lot of movement of cars during the course of the day. But I don't think there's any bottleneck or traffic in the sense that we're stuck there all day as opposed to other parts of the city. Well, that's the example I was going to give. Yes, especially between Prospect Street and, and, and Main Street, right at that intersection, at that intersection, when it's always backed up and the lights are always on.
Backed up, past Minus.
So that's, that's my thinking. That's, that's really my thinking of it. And I don't really think it's economical, and I don't think it's realistic. And in fact, I think it's naive to think a landowner of that property is gonna put in a single-family home. Because they're gonna think of what's most economically beneficial to them, and they're going to put in multifamily, which could end up with a number of driveways coming in and out of that area as opposed to one parking lot where you would have better visibility in it as well. And, and I'm also thinking about the types of families that would go in there with young children. And I think that's going to draw more traffic than a building, a, a, a type of...
Commercial building.
Commercial building that would go in there similar in keeping with that part of...
Because they're still limited by the size of the lot in its entirety of what they can put there. And you're not gonna see a five-story building there. It's not economically feasible. You're not gonna see that type of thing. You're gonna see a small business and a, and maybe an office, some type of office. We don't know what we're gonna see. We, we don't know what we're gonna see there, but we can control it better. Now, ours is just a, a recommendation, you know, or a denial. Not a denial, but just recommending to the city council. It's the city council that's gonna make the decision on this. But it...
But they, they also gotta get our inputs.
Negative or positive recommend?
Right.
Okay. One, one point that I was big is that, one, one point that was brought up was that on all the plans for about two years, and I'm not sure how many meetings I went to, then the overlay district was gonna go all the way to the connector.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. At every meeting I went to, it was going all the way to the connector. And then, for some reason, in the final draft, and I had, and I missed it, oh, how'd that get changed? Okay. And it got changed. And evidently, at a meeting someplace in the subcommittee, somewhere in the city council, it got changed with little and no fanfare. And, uh, but as you say, a professional planner with VHB, and they're a huge company, and that was one of their recommendations, is that the commercial go all the way to the connector. Okay? Right down, right down to there.
Well, like overlay district.
With an overlay district. And if this was an overlay district, you could've done exactly what he wants to do, is that they can put, and that's the whole purpose. We've seen a couple houses come out of there. I fully expect that some of those houses that get torn down, that's what's gonna happen. You're gonna see a small, and that's what we want, that the city's gonna grow. And whether we like it or not, that's one of the areas that's gonna grow. And the, the other area we talked about for years that was gonna grow, was gonna grow in the, uh, off the Pearl Street area. And that whole area has got the old buildings, and that's developing. So things are happening. Same thing with Spruce Street. So we plan things to make them happen. And when they happen, we, you know, we gotta follow through to the, to the long-range plan. And I see it as part of the long-range plan. Do I have any other discussion? Do I have a recommendation?
I'll make the recommendation that we, we, we recommend approval based on the discussion we just had. I think it's the least of two evils, and we can control it better.
I'll second that.
I have a motion.
Because it could get really bad otherwise.
Big apartment.
And, and I know how emotional this is. Believe me, I get, I get the emotion on it too. And I sat there for, for hours.
Okay. I have a motion, okay? To recommend approval.
I was texting Carol one of the nights. So where are you guys?
I have an approval to the, do we wanna make any specific comments on this? To go along with that? Or just as a recommend approval?
What was that, John? Emma, sorry. What was that?
Do we wanna make any, any add, make any additional comments? We think it's the, the best for the, for the area, the long-range plan?
Well, I don't wanna get into the long-range plan because it, I don't believe...
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to think so.
I believe that, that it's the less of two evils there, and I think it would be a, a better thing. Now, whatever goes there is gonna require site plan development. So it's still gonna come before us, uh, for any kind of approval of what goes in there. And we can control it that way. But I don't know how you, you put that in the, in the recommendation.
Recommendation, I think, and I, I would try to summarize that they, that we recommend that to the city council as the, uh, the future would be, would predicate a, a plan through the, uh, through the site plan, approval process that would require us to take a long, hard look at, at the use and the traffic. And when we know what we have for a plan.
Think if you put a home complex in there, and think of how...
And that would be the best use of the property.
That's, yes.
Okay, that's the motion. Any discuss, further discussion?
No.
You know, now, call to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Uh, new business. City Council Petition, forty-eighteen, Kristen Kelly, Plan Director. Amendment article eighteen, section twenty-two oh five of the Leamester zoning ordinance with language required, recreational marijuana facility. Recommendation, uh, just a, a statement to the city council,
We've continued that.
That we've continued the hearing. And that we'd like to see if there's a possibility of, of forming a joint committee?
Yeah, I guess I will, uh, reach out.
Let's not call it a joint committee.
Good pick-up, Tom.
So we're calling it.
Thank you, Tom.
How about I, um, write a letter to the clerk requesting that we form a committee? And then that can start a process? Because they'll have to see who would wanna be on that committee. Do we, how many people you might want on it, or whoever's interested, or?
Yeah, whoever's interested, I, I'd like to be on it. I'd like to have one other member of the board participate.
I'll be on.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no?
No.
Motion carries. City Council Petition, forty-one eighteen, Kristen Kelly, Plan Director. Amend, uh, nine, section twenty-two dash sixty of Leamester zoning ordinance to add language requiring deep observation hole testing for stormwater infiltration detention areas.
Motion to recommend approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Okay, communications, Schedule a Public Hearing, Plan Board Recommendation. The City Council Petition, fifty-nine eighteen, James Whitney and ten registered voters. Amend the zoning ordinance to add drive-through to all allowable uses on the MU one. We're gonna look at this, we're gonna schedule this.
When's the next, next meeting date is what?
Five-twenty-one at six-thirty.
Five-twenty-one at six-thirty? That's my move.
Motion for June, for five-twenty-one?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty. Any discussion? You know, call for all vote. Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Plan Board Recommendation, City Council Petition, C dash fifty-two, Dean J. Mazrela, Mayor. Request Authorization to acquire by purchase, gift, and or eminent domain of mass of land located at Ligon Hill Central Street and describe N A D recorded in the Woodstock Northern District Registry of Deeds and Book thirty-nine seventy-seven, page fourteen. For general municipal purposes, on such terms and conditions as the mayor deems appropriate and has funding therefore rise the appropriate transfer from available funds and or borrow the sum of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of said acquisition and costs related to incidental heretofore and further to authorize the mayor to enter to any and all agreements and execute any and all instrument as they be necessary, uh, convenience to accomplish the foregoing acquisition. Yes. Um, does this require a, is this a recommendation, or should we have a hearing on it?
It's not his own.
But this is the recommendation.
Not his own change.
What's it about?
It's, so it's this one.
It's a dog property.
It's that, it's, how many acres is that? Twenty-five acres?
Twenty-five acres. It's, it's, Dog Park has been one potential use that listed, but it's, I think they show it to use it as...
This is down by, uh, it's off.
This is right on, it's right on the...
It's Monster Land, actually.
No, this one.
No, 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 no. This is Sterling.
No, this one.
This is the other one.
This one. There's two, I know, there's two different ones.
This is one right on the, right on the line.
This is right across from LPQ.
Oh, yeah, okay, good, good. Yeah, yeah, right, right. It goes up the hill.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So I know that the, um, the, the family, the owner, has asked the city if they have interest in the parcel.
My, my question, I don't know if this is the time for the question or not, but...
Yeah, go ahead.
It says in here that, in the letter, that they believe it's below the assessed value, but they'd get back to us on it. And I don't know if we know what the assessed value of the property is.
It's a good question. I don't know.
It might come up next time anyway. So I'm just gonna put that out there.
Who's, who's the owner of the land right now? Exavis?
No.
No, it's not.
This is the Black family. I forget if it follows first name, but, um...
This is going up the hill.
It's been in their family for a long time.
Yeah.
And they are hoping to, uh, protect it. Oh, this is, okay.
Yeah, this is, I'm not sure about this, you know? Just for the city to acquire land, for the sake of acquiring land, we don't have a plan for it. Do we need it? And, and it came up earlier is, my personal opinion is that we need housing. And we need jobs. We need people to come in. But before we can attract any companies into the area, we have to have housing. And that happened many years, maybe twenty years ago. That, it was EMC that wanted to come in, and, and it was at the end. And they said, "We like the area, we like everything, everything."
Oh, this was the side, the new dog park that was in the paint.
Yes. That's what happens, is this...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We, you, you didn't have, we didn't have the housing for the people.
But it's a walking trail uphill.
Yeah, it's walking trails. I mean, we have one-third of the city, approximately one-third of the city today is open space. We don't need any more open space. That's my opinion.
So I'm just back to my question. This is the letter from William Mitchell, the third paragraph. It says, "The, uh, the great upon a place which I believe is lower than market value and appraise what the property is terribly underway. Results will be forwarded to you." And so I would like to have those results before we...
What's the date of the letter?
We would like to...
So the question to the assessor was my question.
If, if this property's worth double that, then it's a different question than if it's worth at that.
But, but, you know, so what's the city doing? You know?
Well, that's it.
I mean, putting housing there is gonna be a difficult thing because of the elevations. Uh, so that, that won't work. But, but I mean, what's, what's it to the city? If you can't put housing, you can't put an industry there. It stays open space anyway by the law.
Could be trails.
It's entrance to the city from, from, from Sterling. We've got a lot of entrances to the city now, don't we?
Yeah.
I, I don't get it myself. I don't get it.
Do we have a vote?
Yeah, let's vote, yeah.
Well...
Yeah.
Do we have a vote?
What, what are we doing?
What do we wanna do?
We don't have a...
The motion I got over here is that we, we hold off until we get an assessed value is some further information on the property.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So, that's good. Second.
Second.
Third.
I have a motion by Paul, seconded by Sal, that we request additional information on the actual assessed value of the property.
Oh, you're right, which I believe.
How's that sound?
Which I believe, yeah. That's good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Land Board, and, and...
Well, it'd be good to know.
Maybe the city council should form a, a committee, uh, somebody to, to look at it, say, what are the uses of this? Could we put a school there in the future?
Let's go to the next.
Or a police station?
It's a hell. You're gonna get cramps walking up in, you're in shape.
Six point three.
Land Board Recommendation, City Council Petition, C fifty-three, Dean J. Mazrela, Mayor. Request that the property known on the assessed map, three oh two Block one A, located on Jungle Road, be declared surplus.
So they could sell it?
Yeah.
So, huh, what's, I don't even know what that means.
So this is a term, the city can turn around and sell it?
Yeah. There, there, there's no interest in all that. Basically, it's, it's the, this piece right here.
Uh, yeah, actually.
Okay.
It's a transfer station.
And that's a transfer station.
Which is gone now, this...
So before the city council, before the city can sell the land, it's gonna be, all the departments have to look at it. It becomes declared surplus, that nobody wants it. And then, then they can go up and get bids.
Yeah.
Get it assessed, and they can sell it.
They can put something.
And they can, they can put up a bid.
We actually did a master plan process of this area.
I don't think so.
And, uh, this, this particular property being in, in that location and sort of an entrance to the, the lower Jungle Road area, so it's kind of the first, would be the first, um, the first project, basically, in that master plan. There's already interest in it. A fellow who might wanna look at putting a hotel there, um, but there's been other interest in that parcel.
But, you know, we've gotta be real careful with that too because that's where the aquifer, recharge is.
No, that's way down.
It is, but it is down the end.
Oh, I know, but it's still all, you know, we let waste management in there. Jesus Christ. Sometimes we don't have any smarts at all.
No, Sal, no, 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 no. The, the, on that recharge area, that's, that's way down here. And there's a natural...
I know that land like the back of my hand, John.
I do too. And there's a natural backup on the road for the sand pit is back there. And there's a ridge. And on that side of the ridge. So one side of the ridge goes toward the aquifer. The other side goes, goes towards...
So when you cut the ridge down or put something in there, it all goes to the aquifer.
Well, you don't cut down the ridge.
Well, you don't have control if you sell it.
Well, this is not, this is on the other side.
I know where it is. So...
Well, anyway, do we wanna, uh, we have no plans for it.
Surplus?
Um, declare it surplus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm sure there's a criteria for that, but I don't know it, and I'm not gonna find it in that book. So, you guys, I think we just don't call something surplus just because we want to.
I agree.
Right.
Well, basically, it, it, I don't know why, I don't think, he's come to us before.
Yeah, why is it coming to us to begin with?
I don't know, but in six point two, he wants to buy something, and then six point three, he wants to sell something. Why doesn't, why don't we just keep everything the same?
Call it a while.
Okay. And this, yeah, do I have a motion on this?
I'd, I'd like to know what the definition of surplus is and where we go.
Motion to, uh, recommendation to get more information. No, we don't have, we have all the information.
No, you get the information. Kristen, the piece of land, the city, we have a potential guy that wants to develop it. And before, the city owns it, it's gotta go to every department to say, "Do we want it?" We don't want it. We've got no plans for it. So the motion says we are, we, that we should take and declare it surplus.
Were you involved in that, Kristen? In this discussion? Do you recommend it? You have no issue with it?
Um, I don't have an issue with it. It's a kind of strategic lot right there. And just being, um, you know, right near Walmart, right at the highway interchange and sort of the entrance to this lower area.